All right. My gosh, I don't have a gavel. All right, let's see. Let's bring the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025 to order. Here we are. It's a regular meeting. We've just concluded an executive session at which no decisions had been made. At 4:30, the Select Board toured the new Brattleboro Police substation at 77 Flat Street. We had a site visit, and I commend all involved. And so now, we will go right to our tonight's agenda. But first, let me ask John. John, was the meeting properly worn?
Yes, Liz, it was.
Thank you very much. All right. We're convening the regular meeting. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Yes?
Yeah, I had requested that an item be placed on tonight's agenda that wasn't, and I wanted to propose that it be added to the agenda for January 6th, the first meeting of the New Year, which is the -- so I moved that the removal of encampments be placed on the agenda for our first regular business meeting in January, and that representatives of 69A Elliott, Groundworks, and the Town Health Officer be invited to speak to the current process and opportunities for collaboration and improvement.
I think the Agenda Setting Committee has discussed this item and has discussed sometime in January. I'm not sure if all of those elements can be included, but the Agenda Setting Committee will discuss it and will get back to you.
Well, I'd like to still make that motion at tonight's meeting.
I don't know that a motion is necessary.
Well, point of order. Can we make that motion without it being a warrant thing? Is that a?
No.
For an agenda item, my understanding is that with Robert's Rules of Order, that can be added, and if it's not taken up, if it's not put on the agenda by the Agenda Setting Committee, then a member of the Select Board could ask for a vote for it to be put on the next meeting agenda. And I'm saying in, out of an understanding of the full schedule that we have, that we will put that on the agenda for the first meeting of January.
Well, our attorney's just left.
I think he can make a motion, and if it's seconded, you can discuss it and vote on it.
All right.
From reviewing the -- oh, if I could just make a point of order.
Yes.
Just from reviewing the procedure for the Select Board, I understand that there wouldn't be any discussion of the motion, that it's just an up and/or down vote.
And that it will be taken up by the Agenda Setting Committee.
That it would be then put on the, what it says is the next meeting's agenda, and what I'm suggesting here is the first meeting of January.
All right. And I'm, I can, I do not wish to guarantee that all of these elements would be, all of these persons would be able to discuss, present at this time.
Yeah, there's nothing in here saying that they would present. It's saying that they would be invited to present.
Very good. All right. Isaac has made a motion, and I will read the motion and then we'll vote on it. To move that, to move that removal of encampments be placed on the agenda for our first regular business meeting in January, and that representatives of 69A Elliott, Groundworks, and the Town Health Officer be invited to speak to the current process and opportunities for collaboration and improvement. All those Select Board members in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Right? All those not in favor, please raise your hand and say no.
Aye.
Okay, that passes three to two, and we will endeavor to make that happen.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move to approve the meeting minutes from November 4th, November 12th, and November 18th. Would someone like to make that motion?
I move that the Select Board approve the minutes from November 4th, November 12th, and November 18th.
Great. Isaac has moved to approve the minutes from November 4th, November 12th, and November 18th. All Select Board members in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes five zero. And Chair's remarks. I don't have any particular remarks other than to remind everyone that this is a Select Board meeting, and it's a regular meeting of the Select Board, and the public is invited to speak, and do we have a lot of people to speak on June or?
No one has raised their hand yet to speak.
All right. And because of the snow, we're going to see if we can limit people's comments instead of three minutes to two minutes so that we can all get home safely. That's it. Managers' comments?
Yes, a few things. Petitions for Brattleboro Town Officers, Wyndham South, these school district board members, and town meeting members will be available at the Town Clerk's Office beginning Thursday, December 4th during their open business hours from Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 12:00 p.m. and 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. with the following exceptions. They will not be available Friday, December 5th through Friday, December 12th. Petitions will only be available between the hours of 9:00 through 12:00 on those days. Completed petitions are due back to the Town Clerk's Office by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, January 26th for town officers and representative town meeting members. Incumbents for representative town meeting members who have terms expiring will be mailed a notice of intent form in early January, and they must return their signed notice of intent form by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, January 26th. Town elections will be held on Tuesday, March 3rd at the American Legion located at 32 Linden Street. An annual representative town meeting will begin on Saturday, March 21st, 2026 at 8:30 a.m. in the high school gymnasium. Also, the town would like to remind residents, businesses, and nonprofits to check with the town manager's office before planning events, especially those held on public property. I guess we've had a few late, late calls there, so Jessica is asking that any street or sidewalk blocking permit, which is required whenever a portion of a street or sidewalk is blocked, or for events, construction, or moving trucks, or events that people anticipate more than 50 attendees require an open meeting permit, and really giving her a little more advance notice on these would be quite helpful. So please reach out to Jessica in the town manager's office at jstickler@brattleboro.gov or at 802-251-8115 if you require a permit. Thank you.
Great. Are there Select Board members who have comments or committee reports?
Yes.
Thank you, Liz. I just wanted to say that I'm glad that we are trying to have this difficult conversation about homelessness and public order and public safety, and I wanted to chip in with the perspective that I had a great meeting today with John and Chuck here and Darren Pacico where we talked about some of these things and are going to be making some efforts to make information a little more clear, make it more obvious for people if their personal belongings have been moved or cleaned up, what they can do to get them. And the reason I'm bringing it up is because I just want to highlight that town staff is doing a very difficult job that when they clean up these campsites, this is a painful job for them to do, and I appreciate their willingness to do it with a smile for the good of the town. I also want to balance against that, that I just hope we can all recognize the impulse to try to do something for the people whose belongings are being taken is that it's hard to think of a more desperate circumstance than somebody who is sleeping in a tent in the forest in winter in Vermont. So hopefully, we can hold both those thoughts at the same time and try and make some small improvements for everyone. Thank you.
Are there other Select Board members have comments they'd like to make?
Sure. I'd love to make a comment. I want to especially thank the Department of Public Works for our plowed roads and salted, and also that there is free sand at the town sand pile across from the town garage. We, my husband and I were there this morning filling up buckets, so it's soft, it's shovelable, it's available, so thanks.
Thank you, Amanda. How about over here? Isaac?
Thank you. Yeah, I also echo what Amanda said, the appreciation for, well, for all the departments, and today in particular, I was thinking about the Department of Public Works and thanking for all the snow removal work. At the last meeting, I mentioned the annual turkey trot that was Thanksgiving morning, and just wanted to report that there were more than 300 people who participated of all ages. It was a really fun day, fun event, and it generated revenue for local food security efforts, raising funds for both Food Works and the Vermont Food Bank. And it's great to see Living Memorial Park in action with the skating rink that's open. I had a chance to check it out on Saturday. Encourage folks who are able and interested to check that out, and I know there's, the ski hill must be in operation soon, if not already. I wanted to also uplift the miniatures and the windows. Thank you to the folks who brought that energy and initiative. It's really fun to see that in both businesses that are open and ones that are closed storefronts. Just great to see that energy. I want to uplift the beloved shelter at the beloved community church on Town Crier Drive, which opened last night and opens again tonight at 8:00 p.m. A, you know, a tremendous amount of vision and work has gone into this. It's been a long time. A lot of people are concerned about emergency shelter when it's really cold out, so I'm grateful for that work. On Sunday, there was a vigil in honor of, in Pliny Park, in honor of the National Guardsmen who were horrifically shot while deployed to DC by a suspected Afghan national. I'd like to echo a statement from the Vermont Afghan Alliance condemning the shooting and reminding this us that this was act was an act of an individual acting on their own and cannot be attributed to an entire community. I spoke with the Director of the Vermont Afghan Alliance just the other day, and she is encouraging public officials across the state to echo this sentiment. What they posted on social media was Afghan allies resettled across Vermont risked their lives in service to U.S. military and diplomatic missions over a 21-year period in Afghanistan. Today, Afghan allies, allies across Vermont worked tirelessly to rebuild their new lives, grow Vermont's workforce and tax base, contribute to the Vermont economy, and to the vibrancy of dozens of Vermont communities. Afghan allies are our neighbors, our friends, and our colleagues. I want to uplift ECDC's refugee resettlement work here in Brattleboro, encourage all of us to stand up for our most vulnerable neighbors. And finally, I just wanted to follow up on our last Select Board meeting. We discussed some concerns that I had brought from residents about no trespass orders. And as policymakers, it's our job to understand the potential impact of our policies, and there's a lot more learning for all of us to do. We all want Brattleboro to be the best it can be, and I'm committing to, committing to working with my colleagues here to make progress with full awareness of the, to the best of our ability of all the needs and the resources available in our community. Thank you.
Do you have anything that you'd like to say? All right, very good. Let's begin our business with the consent agenda. John, want to give?
How about participation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, members of the public, two minutes a pop. Eric?
No, actually, first, I have a statement that I've carefully worked on for the last couple of days, and it comes in at 2:30, and I'd like permission to read the whole statement.
Certainly, Eric.
Okay, and I actually have an assistant to do it.
I'm keeping the reading because it's. I'm Heidi Fisher. This is Eric Caron. These are Eric's words. How does Brattleboro solve its problems? A motion passed at the last Select Board meeting that adds a fee to the cost of trash bags. To me, this illustrates the Board's unusual problem-solving approach. For those who are not here, here's what happened. DPW's new plan for trash pickup was approved by the Board. The Board then determined that the bag price in the just-approved plan was too high for some residents and made a motion to amend the plan. A motion was made to charge an extra fee on the trash bags and then use the proceeds to provide bags to eligible people, essentially requiring one group of townspeople to pay for a town service and then provide that service to another group for, for free. Town employees were directed and, to create and implement this program. How does this illustrate the problem? In my mind, this is yet another example of town government overstepping its mandate to provide essential services while also being financially irresponsible. Our town is in a financial crisis. We cannot afford to create additional services to meet the perceived or even real needs of every person in our town. I understand that there are many people with needs, but the town and the taxpayers cannot realistically be expected to meet them all. The trash bag motion was presented and passed as only an outline of an idea with no actual plan and many unknowns. How much will it cost to run this plan? How many town employee hours will this require and at what cost? Does the Select Board have the legal right to charge fees to residents for the purpose of providing a gift of free service to a select group of the community? What are the unexpected consequences? How and who determines who's eligible? How and who determines how? How and who determines how free bags are distributed? When a plan is implemented and we expect town employees to be able to do their current and, oh, sorry, when a plan is implemented, implemented, will we expect town employees to be able to do their current and additional work without hiring more employees? Will all town services now be on a sliding scale? And what would that mean for town employees to implement, implement these systems? Once a plan like this is added to, it is difficult to remove. I believe this is a slippery slope, one that will lead the town and the, and the taxpayers into deeper financial stress. I think this motion sets a dangerous precedent. I ask you to reconsider.
Thank you very much. Are there other members?
Actually, my, that was my written statement. My last couple of seconds is to say, I do not choose to just, you know, mention every motion or every action the board makes. I bring this up because I think it was not thought through, and it has very huge ongoing impact that affects our town. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Can I clarify a few things?
It's not a warned item, so, no. Are there other, other members of the public who have statements that they'd like to make?
We have Jamie Moore online.
Great.
Well, actually, this is Attorney Ron Ferrara zooming in from Jamie Moore's laptop. Good evening. I just wanted to mention that my client is there for one of your consent agenda items. Normally, I would be attending in person, but the weather being what it is, lucky I got this to work. But that would be Agenda Item B, J&amp;K Grocery Store LLC. I know you're not there yet, but I just wanted to mention for the benefit of the, the board that I do represent Mr. Wong, and if you have any questions, I might be able to answer them, but I believe he's also there in the audience tonight, and I wanted him to know that I'm, I'm here as well. So that's all I had to say, and very good meeting so far. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the public who would wish to speak about an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Seth?
Yeah, Mr. Fay.
Mr. Fay. Very good. Mr. Fay?
Ken?
Hello, can you hear me? I can't, okay, good, thanks. Be really quick. I spoke at the November 18th meeting, public participation, and it wasn't included in the minutes. I'm curious as to why that would be. Was it not worthy enough or an oversight? Anyway, that's all. Thanks. Have a good day.
We'll look into that. Thank you.
Kurt Dimes.
Kurt Dimes. Mr. Dimes? Good evening.
Everyone, my name is Kurt Dimes. I work with Brattleboro Common Sense. I live in Brattleboro. There is quite a lot of tension built up around the budget, and I would warn the select board that there may be a, a budget referendum, and in the usual fashion, when the select board gets a budget referendum dumped in its laps, they make a little tweak, and people say, okay, but I think it's, it's going to be, go beyond, it's going to require a little bit more than a tweak. I think the select board is overworked, and that's one of the ways we get into these problems. I think it's overworked because we don't use the select, the representative town meeting enough. The select board is charged with the day-to-day, this is by the charter. The select board's job is to handle day-to-day jobs, day-to-day affairs of the town, and the RTM is a source of ideas, proposals, and commentary for the town. Ideas, proposals, and commentary. It is the source of those by the charter, and since the reforms of 1959, the select board has stayed in the way, preventing the representative town meeting from being a source. Now, you have so many new things on your agenda all the time, and it's just, you know, it's just a terrible lot of work. You're not using or not allowing the RTM to rise to its potential. If you do it today, of course, they're not going to do a great job on everything, but over the years, it's got to have to, going to have to come because your jobs are getting heavier and heavier. You have my sympathy for that, but it is in some, to some degree, in the, the doing of the select board that it always wants to, you know, gather work and take care of things in a leadering, in a leading kind of fashion while the RTM is supposed to be doing that. Do I have a couple more seconds?
No.
All right.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Excellent. So, John, I'll ask you the question I asked you a couple minutes ago.
Okay. We'll get around to it eventually.
A sketch on the consent agenda.
Yep, so we have five items on the consent agenda tonight. If you approve this agenda, you'll be approving a $98.05 per ton bid award for winter road salt to Apalachia Salt of Rochester, New York. You'll be approving a second-class liquor license and tobacco license for J&amp;K Grocery Store LLC at 69 Elliott Street. You will be approving a public notice of the town's intent to convey an easement over parcel 00330004 to the Friends of West River Trail and to get, convey any salvage surplus material located on that parcel. You'll be ratifying the decision to transfer funds not immediately needed for ongoing obligations to Community Bank in the amount of $7,63,334 in order to get a higher rate of interest. And you'll be authorizing the select board and town manager to sign the loan agreement for an amount not to exceed $1,620,000 for 40 years at 0% interest to fund the secondary Pleasant Valley Water Storage Tank.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Is there anyone who wants to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Madam Chairwoman, I would like to pull an item. I'm wondering if it could be discussed right after the vote on, we have to wait, or do we have to wait to the very end?
You have to wait to the very end.
And so I'd love to ask a couple of questions on the item number, or item letter B, J&amp;K Grocery.
Yeah, I, I can see that. I'll, I'll pull it, and we'll all have to wait to the end of the meeting.
We have to wait to the end of the meeting?
Well, we'll vote on it. We'll vote on pulling it. Do you wish to vote on?
I do wish to vote on pulling it, yes.
All right. Amanda has made a motion to pull Item B, J&amp;K Grocery Store LLC, from the consent agenda. All select board members in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay. Peter, you're, you're a no.
I'm just present.
Present. Okay, that's 4-0-1, and it will be added to the end of the meeting. In the meantime, I-
Well, hang, hang, hang on. I mean, if, is there a way to cover this right now? I mean, we've got, I think this meeting's probably not going to get out till 10:30 at night. I think there is precedent for addressing it right out of the gate, so.
All right. I'll take that under advisement, and it's at my discretion, so, yes, we have had two people ask. We had a very nice attorney on before, and the gentleman sitting here, so let's pull this back to Amanda, but first, we have to vote on the rest of the consent agenda.
Yep.
So let's vote on the rest of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for an amended motion about the consent agenda?
Yeah, I move to accept the consent agenda with Item B removed.
All right. Amanda has moved to accept the consent agenda without Item B. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That's for, Peter?
I'm just here.
Okay, so that's 4-0-1. And now, instead of the first item of regular business, we will have Item B, which is J&amp;K Grocery Store LLC. John, do you want to talk a little about that before we have our discussion?
Yep, unless Hillary Francis is online, Seth, I'll cover this if she is not yet there. Nope. Okay, so this is an application for a second-class liquor license and a tobacco license for 69 Elliott Street, which is previously Indo-American grocery, and there are no outstanding taxes or fees owed to the town. The applicant has never held a prior liquor license in any state, and the applications for both the liquor license and the tobacco license are included in your backup materials. They've been reviewed and approved by the Brattleboro Police Department and by the Brattleboro Fire Department. Following review by the local liquor and tobacco commissioners, the applications will be subject to review by the Vermont Department of Liquor Control for final action. And Hugh, Hugh Huang from J&amp;K Grocery and, I understand his attorney as well, are present in the select board meeting to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right. Let's, Seth, you'll get the attorney up, and then Amanda, ask your question.
I'll ask a question, yeah, and it might be just the order of doing things. So I, as I look at page 21 of our packet and the, the DLL application for education details, I don't see any details there. Is it required for an applicant to do their DLL education prior to applying, or have it be in process? And where is that process?
Although, I can speak to that.
Great, thank you.
I, I don't see my, my picture on the screen, but I assume you can see me here. Thank you, it's old around here. So anyway, the, the certification with respect to the education has been completed, that documentation was submitted, Mr. Huang completed the class, and in fact, the certification was issued by the state and was included in the package up to the liquor authority there. If they haven't sent it back down to the town, that's probably an oversight. I can certainly get it to you tomorrow if you want to see the piece of paper, but that education requirement has been satisfied.
Great. Do you have additional questions, Amanda?
I think it looks clear. That was the one question I had.
All right. I just want to say that in review of the work this evening, I had a conversation with the police chief about this application, and she assured me that the application had been reviewed and approved by the police department. Are there other members who have any questions?
I have a, a question, just in terms of, like, you know, I have, in this, the memo prepared for this evening from town staff, there, there's reference to concerns about the establishment that's been located at 69A Elliott Street, and I am, I have concerns about liquor and tobacco enterprise in our downtown area and how that might affect the feeling, feel downtown, and, and I'm curious if that is a consideration that, you know, and I'm, I know we don't have the attorney, town attorney with us, but is this something that we can factor into our decision-making, or does our decision-making have to, like, what is the criteria for us in making this decision?
Well, to begin with, they have a legal right to apply for this application, this store, the previous, the previous operators operated it with these selling tobacco and tell, and selling liquor, and so they go through the regular process, and I think the zoning is such that this location can be at this. There are also establishments where smoking and, you can buy cigarettes in numerous locations in town, and you can certainly consume liquor in various locations in town, so I, you know, every once in a while, what's the name of that group that?
Yeah, Building Better Futures.
Building Better Futures comes and tells us about a location where liquor or cigarettes are sold that are questionable, but I don't think that that's the case this evening. John, you want to?
So the town clerk, Hillary Francis, is online, and I think she can help, help inform your authority on this.
Great. Hillary?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Haven't seen you in some time.
Thanks. I don't think that my video is working very well. I'm sorry about that. Okay, excellent. So first of all, the organization that you were talking about is Building a Positive Community. That's what they're called, and I, I would definitely want to get town attorney involved in the conversation. My understanding is, you know, sort of what Liz was saying, if you allow it, you allow it. It's zoned accordingly, and it currently exists. I would assume that you could pass an ordinance that says the town of Brattleboro is a dry community, and we don't sell alcohol in our downtown, or you could say, we're limiting the number of establishments in our downtown that sell or serve alcohol or tobacco. Those would certainly be questions for the town attorney. In terms of approving a liquor or tobacco license, I believe that it's, you approve it or you don't, and conditions are not something that can be put on. You can put, you can put a condition on and say, in six months, we want them to come back and prove that they're doing X, Y, and Z, otherwise, we will revoke their license. But the DLL will only issue or not issue the license, and they will issue or not issue it for a year. Does that answer?
Thank you, Hillary, and we learned within the past year that we cannot put time restrictions on that, that they are also set by the state of Vermont for, like, a bar.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right. Does that answer your question, Isaac?
Somewhat, it's, it's helpful. I understand that we could speak with the town attorney about a possible ordinance, and we can't condition this, this license, but my question is, I think, is, do we have the authority to say, no, we actually aren't comfortable with having a liquor and tobacco, you know, liquor and tobacco being sold in this spot?
Why would we have an issue with somebody doing business in our downtown? I, I get it. I don't smoke, so it's not my thing, but there are people that smoke. Why, why do we have an issue having cigarettes sold in our downtown?
I mean, I'm concerned about the, the health and well-being of members of our community and the atmosphere, the, the downtown, and having lived in places that were very close to liquor and liquor establishments, or places that were selling liquor, I've seen, like, you know, it's had a negative impact. I know how it can sometimes exacerbate, there's a prevalence of liquor stores in high poverty areas, and it can exacerbate poverty, and so I have concerns for those reasons. But if the direction is that we should, from the, from, if the guidance from our town clerk is that it would be more appropriate to have some sort of ordinance about that, that that would be a more appropriate route if we have these sorts of concerns, then I would defer to the town clerk's guidance.
I would think such an ordinance, yeah, please, Hillary.
So the ordinance piece, I don't know if that's. Move, and that would be a question for the town attorney. I believe from previous conversations with the town attorney and the Department of Liquor and Lottery, to answer your question directly, Isaac, there are certain grounds that you could deny an application, right? If, if an applicant has, is applying for renewal, and they've had a number of violations, you could set conditions that they need to meet, and then they need to come and speak to you. If they're not zoned to be serving or selling alcohol or tobacco. If they are delinquent on paying their taxes or utilities, if they have not obtained a business license. Right, those, those are the types of things. So when, when I receive a liquor license application or a tobacco license application, part of my process is I reach out to all of the different departments to say, hey, assessor's office, do they have their business license? Treasurer's office, have they, have they paid their taxes? Do they have any loans out that are past due? Police Department, Fire Department, do you all have any concerns with complaints at that location? And then that's the administrative process that I go through before I submit a memo to you all recommending staff, like, staff recommending approval of that. Does that help?
It's very helpful to me. It sounds that this is an administrative question and not a policy, not a policy-related question.
Right, so.
I'd love to ask, may I ask, I'm just going to circle back to the education. Was the training done in person or was it done online? And the reason I ask is because we had a precedent where a business did a training online, an individual actually was caught in violation, and we requested that that business come back in six months after, after doing training.
I believe that the training, I can't swear. Because I don't have the documentation in front of me. But I do believe in this case that the training was taken online. The certification is by a program that is run by the state liquor authority. And, I mean, it satisfies their requirements. Maybe Mr. Huang would like to answer the question directly. But the idea is that the certification process included the educational requirement. You have to carry, you know, workman's compensation insurance. There are a number of boxes you have to check before your application is even reviewed by the state, and then they send it down to the town level. I can, again, I could supply the missing certification with respect to what you'd like to see in the paperwork package there. But I don't know for 100% that it was a online class that Mr. Huang took.
Oscar.
I'm not totally sure why we're applying this level of scrutiny to a brand-new business with no. So, I mean, I think it's good that we're doing our due diligence, but just putting my two cents in that I'm happy to approve this, so.
Thank you. And we are 20 minutes over schedule. Yes, sir?
Just one other quick comment that might be helpful to the board with respect.
Question of downtown, you know, sales of liquor and alcohol. You'll notice that conspicuously absent from this request is the tobacco substitute permit. That is a separate animal, and my client has not applied for that just yet. That's the kind of thing that would include paraphernalia and flavored tobacco substitutes, et cetera, vapes, et cetera. That might be an opportunity, if you see a permit, request for something like that, to have a more robust comment, comment and question and answer.
Thank you. Okay, Board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
I appreciate the due diligence, thank you.
Would you like to make a motion, Amanda?
No, would someone else make a motion?
All right.
Sure, I will.
Thank you.
I move to approve the second-class liquor license and tobacco license for J and K Grocery Store, Inc., located at 69 Elliott Street.
Oscar has moved to approve a second-class liquor license and tobacco license for J and K Grocery, Inc., located at 69 Elliott Street. All select board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, five, zero. Thank you for your attendance and your attendance on Zoom. And I congratulate you on your new business. Now, back to item A, which I believe is Kate Traskis. Kate? Kate is here as, from the Downtown Brattleboro Alliance, with her 2025 annual report. Is there anything you'd like to say in introduction?
No.
All right, welcome, Kate.
Thank you very much, very happy to be here. Kate Traskis, I'm the executive director of Downtown Brattleboro Alliance. We are your designated downtown organization nonprofit for the town of Brattleboro. And this is a program, a longstanding program with the state of Vermont, the downtowns, of which there are 24 designated downtowns across the state. And so my organization, in one form or another, has been the designated downtown org for over 25 years. I thought maybe we could just start, I have a slideshow that's just kind of a visual representation of the work that we do at the DBA. And so Seth, it's not timed or anything, but if you want to just kind of flip through the images, I think that it's a great example of the downtown that the DBA aspires to and the one that we see every day. Thank you. I guess I should have put music to that.
Like, the record should show that we all enjoyed those pictures.
Okay, everybody was smiling. Add that to the, to the report. Yeah, so I guess tonight I just wanted to highlight a couple of things from the past year. You know, we've welcomed several new businesses to downtown in this past year. We've engaged hundreds of volunteers. We've hosted dozens of events, including two new ones. Our luncheon lot in Preston on Flat Street, as well as the Teen Street event in partnership with, gosh, dozens of organizations that we partner with across the town, other nonprofits. We do work with business support and development, our brick-and-mortars, but also entrepreneurs and what I would call microbusinesses that we invite into the downtown. And I think really all of this is because we believe that our downtown is vital to the overall health of the community and the town of Brattleboro and the region. We are so lucky to be in this creative corner of Vermont with an outsized footprint of arts and culture and outdoor recreation and a community that is so invested and active in supporting each other and the work. And so I think something that, to take away from the images that were shared is that downtown isn't about one person or one organization. It's really about all of us showing up day in and day out as business owners or as nonprofits or as the community to support this very special place. And so what we do at the DBA is really cultivate the vitality of downtown through community and economic development. And that is, drives all of our work, bringing people downtown to have a shared, positive-felt experience, to bring friends and neighbors, to spend some dollars, and really to bolster the rest of the town.
Wonderful. Let me just remind my colleagues that there's no motion on this item. It's just a discussion.
Well, I think, based on our, I don't know if it's the charter, chapter 15, but each year, the DBA comes back to the select board with our annual update. And I think the one formal piece of the process is the downtown improvement district, the special assessment tax funds that come to the DBA.
And that's part of our budget?
Yes, that would be a question for you to, whether to include that on the warning for the representative town meeting at the end of January. But typically, the DBA will come and ask you to consider including that on the warrant.
Are you doing that now, or are you going to come back and do that?
I'd love to do that now.
Very good. Okay, ask away.
Okay, would you please consider including the Downtown Brattleboro Alliance Assessment Tax on the, what is it on? Representative Town Meeting?
Is that here in, in your summary that you, it's in our packet?
I don't believe there's anything written in the packet, no. Do I need to submit a specific formal request?
Well, it's usually on the warning, right?
No, it's typically on the warning.
Got it.
We have to ask for a specific number to be on the warning?
Typically, you've asked for the same number every year forever since I can remember.
Forever.
I think it's $80,000. If you wanted to, we could probably come up with a motion now, but you really, it would be not until you do the warning that you officially would be doing anything. So I think you could discuss whether you want to consider including that as part of your budget and warning.
So am I hearing you right, that we can discuss the awesome things that DBA does and how, like, excited we are for the work that they're doing, but we cannot actually vote on a motion to put any funds towards projects unless it's in a direct, it's a warned agenda item? Is that correct?
No, I mean, you could do that, you could instruct us to incorporate something into the budget as part of budget revisions, if you would like. You could do any number of things on this if you wanted to, so. It was a warned item and.
And could this item, to be named later, could these funds come from the revolving loan fund because it's economic development? In much the same way that the BDCC is?
No, it's a little different because we have a downtown improvement district. And what the article that you typically put on the town meeting warrant says is would the, would the, would the town raise those taxes specifically for the DBA in the amount of $80,000?
And to be clear, these are, the downtown improvement district is a very clear geography. And the commercial property owners within the district are the ones who receive this special assessment tax for the downtown program specifically.
Great.
If I'm remembering right, it's not in the general fund budget, right? It's a special assessment.
A special assessment for these special taxpayers.
Right, and there are special tax breaks and incentives that these commercial properties receive by being part of the downtown program.
And, and I do believe technically it's in the general fund budget, but it's a pass-through, so.
Excellent, so do we want to take a vote on that? Or we want to wait until January?
Happy to wait until we do the agenda, but we're the warning.
I'd like to do it after the warning, just to set a precedent that's.
I think we all want to go back and talk about how wonderful the DBA is.
Oh, great.
And, and the work that they do. And then we will essentially hold on that item until it's ready to be warned. If that's all right with you.
Does that mean I'm coming back to this?
No, not necessarily.
I mean, I'll come anyway, but.
Yeah, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
I don't think that's necessary because we'll all remember your presence here and all the lovely pictures.
Okay.
But I think that because there isn't a, a motion, I think, well, I'll just open up to my colleagues to comment.
Sure.
And then anyone in the public and take it from there.
Sounds good.
Isaac, you want to start?
Yeah, just thank you for all of the energy and community building that you do in Brattleboro. It's great to see this list of events. And I'm remembering all the positive things that we've heard about these.
Thank you.
Peter? Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, give me a minute.
All right.
I'll say something, you guys are amazing.
Thank you.
I'm, like, the pictures are, don't do you justice in all the amazing work that you're doing for downtown on a very slim budget. And it's, you're bearing the lion's share. But I asked John in my meeting today, I was like, why do we do this in December when they're like flat out with everything? Market on Main, the miniatures, the outreach, the, I mean, it's a, so thank you for coming. I'm sure you're exhausted and just so excited to celebrate this awesome holiday season with everything happening downtown.
Thanks, Amanda.
Oscar?
No, no comment, other than just thank you, and I know how hard you and Erin work.
I just, in addition to my compliments, I just want to mention that in your, your several pages here are quite informative. And they talk about all these new businesses that have come. And I think, I think the general impression is that there are not a lot of new businesses coming to downtown. But to the contrary, I think you said there's eight.
Yeah, within the last year.
I think I've been to them all, and they're great.
Yeah.
And, and all of these various initiatives, you know, it's not just Galley Walk, but so many different things. And I think, I, I think we should note that you're, you're flexible enough and willing to take on this miniature project, which is huge and really wonderful for our town. And I can't imagine how many people are going to come and watch and, you know, go have a cookie at Amy's and discuss which one was their favorite. I've done that already.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really fun, and I appreciate you jumping in and working with Mel, who's given the town a tremendous gift. So if Peter has anything he wants to add?
I have the opportunity to talk to Kate often and always, in those moments, tell her how much I appreciate the effort that you and Erin pool, how you pool all your resources and, you know, check pride sometimes just to get things done. And I just want you to know that I recognize that and all the hard work that you do and kind of helping to coordinate and point people in the right direction is just to get things done and help it move seamlessly. So, you know, again, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I just want to follow up on something that I heard from all of you. And one is, we are scrappy and, and it takes a lot of grit, I think, to do this work. So, you know, I introduced myself, but my, my partner in crime, Erin Skaggs, who works with me every day, is, is part-time. So we have a staff of one and a half people. We have an excellent board and, you know, hundreds of volunteers. And, and we are, I think, a strength of this organization is that we have the ability to be flexible and say yes and kind of rise to the moment of different things when they're presented. And that comes from really the passion that we have for this town and for, for all the potential and the possibility. So thank you for recognizing that. I also wanted to say that the town of Brattleboro has been one of our, the biggest partner that we've had. Every department, Public Works, I know is up later tonight. They are phenomenal, and I love to just kind of go over there and join the meetings. Fire, Police Department, the library, the rec, everybody just is always willing to be, be a. be a partner, and it's, it's phenomenal.
That's great, Kate, thank you. While, while we were talking, John has written a motion that might be appropriate.
I was going to say, with, with all the talk of how busy you are, let's see if we can avoid you having to come back.
Okay.
You'd be okay with that?
I'd be great with that.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to place an item on the warning for the 2026 RTM to authorize the collection of an assessment on the properties in the downtown district in the total amount of $80,000.
Great. Peter has made a motion to place an item on the warning for the 2026 RTM to authorize the collection of an assessment on properties in the downtown district in the total amount of $80,000. All select board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And there we are, five zero.
Thanks.
Can we thank you again?
Sure.
I don't think so. But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Kate?
All right.
Kate, you dropped some. On the chair.
One of my boxing gloves.
There you go.
All right, next is the Brattleboro Department of Public Works. Dan Tyler, Darren Pacheco, and Pete Lynch off to the side. John, is there anything you want to?
Yeah, no, I'll just pretty much just turn it over to Dan. DPW constitutes about 14% of your budget, so it's a significant component, and looking forward to their presentation.
Great.
Great, thank you. Good evening. We've got some slides that's going to bring up. So we're going to go through our FY27 Public Works budget proposal. For the general fund portion of Public Works, it's kind of broke into two sections, the operational budget and then the capital program. And then at the end, we're going to talk briefly about some continued stormwater utility planning. Quick slide on our values. A few years ago, a committee of employees got together and started discussing establishing a set of values for Public Works, safety, integrity, and service to community are what they came up with. They're really become integrated into our day-to-day operations, and, you know, they, they guide everything we do. I mean, even as we talk about tight budgets and, you know, tough situations, they're non-negotiables for the standard of work we're performing, so. And that's really, we see Public Works as a foundation to our community. You know, a lot of what we're doing is behind the scenes. People are relying on it every day, but they don't necessarily see it. You know, whether it's the, the road maintenance, the guys that are out plowing right now, the guys that'll be in later, clearing the sidewalks so they're ready for you to walk on in the morning. We're kind of out there and everywhere. Our organizational chart, we included really to kind of break out what we're talking about tonight, because we have the general fund portion of the budget, which covers the highway division, fleet maintenance, facilities maintenance, the proposed and approved compost collection. And that, those are, those are the items and services we're here to discuss tonight later.
Are they in green?
Yes.
I'm colorblind.
I'm glad there's two of you.
Later in the winter, we'll discuss the utility.
Okay.
So the, the services, there's, the next slide really outlines the critical kind of essential services that each of the divisions provides. This is where, I guess, back to the last slide, the staffing is a huge part of our budget, right? And, you know, when you look at our budget detail, you'll, you'll see that there are increases that represent anticipated contractual increases, and then there are several areas where benefits that were previously accounted for in different areas of the budget have been moved into, into the DPW budget. And, you know, those represent the majority of the increases that you'll see tonight when you look at our budget in detail. Under the services, the kind of the essential services that each division provides, that's kind of where you'll see, when you look through the budget, you'll see increases for things like fuel and construction materials and utilities and various contracted services. That makes up the rest of the budget increases. Those are kind of range from three to eight percent, and most of those were increased based on escalators that the finance department used when they projected the FY27 budget last year. And there's a few areas where they're higher, where we, you know, we've been tracking costs since, we know that things have exceeded those projections, so we've adjusted accordingly. So those are really the, when you talk about our operational budget, those are the, the two areas where you see increases, staffing and benefits, and those general kind of inflationary costs that are broke down to be able to provide the services that we do. And those services are always expanding. In the last year, we've become a DigSafe member, so anyone who excavates in town is required to call DigSafe. We've never been a member, and none of our stuff would get marked out. We are now, so someone calls, we go out and mark our utilities. Traffic lights, something you would think would be a DPW function, has always been done by the fire department. And in their transition and reworking their alarm superintendent, we've taken on those responsibilities in town. We've really tried to establish a crew that's spending more time downtown. We feel like that's an area that's been maybe neglected a little bit over the last years, and we're just trying to spruce things up and kind of have a regular, just, just more of an appearance and responsiveness in the downtown. And then with the compost collection, we're proposing a leaf, the compost collection and the leaf collection for FY27. So along with those services, we're, we're constantly involved in community service functions, gallery walks, Kate mentioned the lunch in the lots, Fourth of July, all sorts of events around town. A lot of that is providing traffic control. We show up when we can and let kids climb on equipment, you know, however we can be part of it. Holiday decorations, we just revamped all the lights across Main Street. A lot of the old ones were going out. So we're involved in a lot of different community service functions as well. And then kind of outside of the scope of what you traditionally think of DPW, we've been involved a lot in different projects around town, the, the transition of the parking system, the upcoming library improvements, the police substation. We do a lot with the tree board, with trimming and planting trees around town. Voting, we set up the, the voting stations, the polls every year, and then a lot of event and emergency planning. So really, all those things put together kind of make up our operations, let's say, the day-to-day stuff we're doing. And then additionally, we have our capital, capital program. Paving is always a big piece of this. A few years ago, we had the townwide assessment done of the streets in town. A consultant drove around town with a camera and assessed all of the, all of the paved roads for cracking, rutting, a bunch of different factors, and scored them essentially. Since those images were taken, we have continued to upgrade the program with work that we've completed, and then there's a depreciation factor just for age. And despite all the work that's been happening around town by our crews and the V-Trans crews, if you look at the chart here, about 20...
20.26 miles of our roads still need major rehab.
At a tune of almost $15 million, just for the major rehabs. Total work, you know, if we said we wanted to go out tomorrow and bring everything up to, up to par, eight, almost $19 million. If you look at the next slide, this is one we, we've looked at in the past, and it has been updated to reflect the changes since, since the imagery was taken. The, the score, the, so the RSR is the score, zero to 100. So we're at a 63.89 right now, and that's up from a 63.5 two years ago. So, you know, the V-Trans paving, seven miles of downtown, really didn't change a whole lot. When we looked at this a couple of years ago, you look at the flat line to kind of to maintain things in the current condition, that was in the neighborhood of $700,000. It's at $880,000 now with taking into account the depreciation of condition and the increased cost. So we have $500,000 proposed for capital paving, and, I mean, you can, you can look at the chart and see, see what the condition is, what's going to happen to the condition of the roads at that funding level. So, I mean, it just kind of talks to the point that by, everything's expensive, but by pushing it out and not kind of addressing those major needs, things are just getting more, more and more expensive. The next one looks at sidewalks. So we've really emphasized sidewalk improvements as much as we can in the last, let's say, four years. The funding level's been right around $200,000, and that gets us about a quarter mile of sidewalk. Conditions vary, that price is up and down a little bit. Kind of industry standard, for, we have about 36 miles of sidewalk in town. Industry standard, we should be doing about 1.4 miles of sidewalk a year. So, you know, that's 1.2 million dollars, I think, was the cost of that.
And one thing to state on the sidewalk, these slides will be available. So in this slide here, you actually can see what Public Works has done themselves, plus what they put out to bid on projects. I mean, in the previous years, we really have made an impact in the last, like Dan said, four years, on trying to push more footage of sidewalk to get completed because the infrastructure's failing so, so quickly. It's still a goal of ours to keep, continue. $200,000 usually out of the capital fund is always contracted out, and then there's a budget line within our operational budget, which is sidewalk repairs. That money is usually used for DPW staff to do what they can. I will say, the last two years, DPW staff has done quite a bit, but it has also pulled us away from other work that is important. You know, one thing we could say is, maybe there was less mowing done this year? Probably was, but we also did more sidewalks with DPW staff. So it's kind of catch 220 here. You've only got 200,000 in capital, it's only giving you 0.25 miles, but we're trying to keep up, so we're kind of getting DPW staff to try to do more, and it's pulling us away from other work, so.
And the FY27 proposed number right now is 25,000. So I think, you know, our plan would, that's not going to allow us to contract any work, but if we dump that into our staff, you know, we could probably get some more work done. I don't think we'll see numbers like we've seen the last couple of years. And really, some of these bigger years are, you know, two years of funding added up. You can look at the longer sections of sidewalk and kind of see those represent the stuff that was contracted, and then the piecemeal stuff around town is often the stuff that our crews do. And then last year, there were several other capital lines implemented into the capital Bridges in large culverts, intersections, retaining walls, bicycle infrastructure's been in there and up and down for a little while. They all, there's sharp cuts represented in all of these lines for FY27. And we were, we were excited last year to see, you know, it felt like a step in the right direction. I mean, $100,000 was the, the budget, the number on a lot of these lines. $100,000 doesn't really go too far towards capital improvements, but it, it kind of allowed us to look forward and think, okay, if we put these two years together, we can tackle this project and we can start planning for it. And with these sharp cuts, it's really going to impact what, what we can and can't get done. You know, I think there's areas where we can progress planning, but there's definitely going to be some projects that are stalled, you know, like the Williams Street and Avenue area where we just did a lot of, spent a lot of money on studying that. You know, the next step would be to progress that to engineering. You know, that, that may have to wait. We've got some engineering in the works on Church Street on a retaining wall. I'm not sure we'll be able to push that one forward. So, I mean, it definitely, it's definitely going to impact the, the work we can get done to a lot of the kind of critical larger infrastructure in town.
And I think one thing to really note here is, is in, in this slide here, we, we put some projects that would be impacted. This is stuff that we're currently working on. And then also, I mean, what's really not shown here is, in, you know, retaining walls, there's 55 town retaining walls in town that are owned by the town here, and in the last five years, we replaced one. And $100,000 does not replace a retaining wall, and usually what we do there is we take capital funding for a year, we, we add it up for a few years while we're working on the, kind of the preliminary plans, and then we finally gain enough funding to do that project. But cutting it to 15,000 is going to be a challenge for us, but we're going to continue to use what we have available to make sure we can maintain what we can with the funds we have. So we're here to show that there's a lot of infrastructure here in town that continues to age, and we're here to show you that with some of these numbers, we could be pushing it off for future, which is just going to cost more in the future. So that's kind of what this slide is trying to, to show the, what we're working with this year.
There is a positive note, though. The capital vehicles, the finance department did some work to kind of reconcile our, our capital lines, and we discovered that in our capital vehicles lines. For some time prior, we've, we found savings in our purchases, and that money has been carried over. So proposed for FY27, there is a front-end loader, a tandem axle dump truck, and two pickup trucks. With that surplus that has built up in the capital vehicles line, we'll, we'll be able to move forward on one of those large purchases. And if trade-in values and everything works out, we might be able to wrap one of the pickups into it as well. So that would leave, we're proposing deferring the second pickup and then leaving one of the bigger purchases in the capital plan, so. And then stormwater, kind of something we've been talking about, stormwater utility, we've been talking about in the background for several years now, recognizing the challenges with the budget. It kind of came up again, and DPW and planning staff kind of... with the budget, it kind of came up again, and DPW and planning staff kind of took a deeper dive into it and looked at all the pieces that we put together in the last several years, and we have a lot of pieces that, now that we didn't have four or five years ago when we looked at this, that will help to, to bring it all together, but it's not something that we can put together for FY27. Staff capacity just won't allow for it, and then when we started really looking into it, there's, there's some key decisions that have to be made about how we want to handle different properties, and shared systems, and non-contributing properties, and kind of getting all the GIS data in line, and it's a pretty big lift. One that's probably worthwhile, we kind of came out of the discussion after sitting down a couple of times and looking at it, thinking that, you know, maybe it's not right for FY27, but we could use some assistance from a consultant on this, and would like to look towards budgeting some money in the future to kind of move that forward. And, you know, I think, we feel like we're in a better place for it now, but we just, it, it might be a little bit out of reach for us. So, I think that, that's the slides we have tonight. Happy to try to answer any questions you might have. You know, we're committed to continued improvement around town, but just recognizing that it's going to be hard with some of these numbers.
And in your backup material is, there should be a separate sheet that actually has the operational budget, just with some side notes on the side there, so that's there as well.
Well, gentlemen, thank you very much. I'll let my colleagues ask their questions, but first I want to ask John, could you explain this slight complication in the budget, which is, you know, the, the base budget, and then you, we'll, we'll be having a separate initiative for capital costs?
Well, one, when I initially presented the proposed budget to you, I suggested that one possibility would be to do a supplementary request around some of these items that Dan and Darren have been talking about, where we really are going on the back foot because of the lack of funding in the capital plan. And if you wanted to, you could put on the town meeting warrant a question around that as to whether the town wants to pay the increased taxes to take care of the sidewalks, the bicycle infrastructure, the retaining walls, the bridges and so forth. Otherwise, we would have to do the best we can with this budget, as, as Dan was saying, and, but you, the board doesn't have to do that. You could also incorporate some of those things into your budget and bring that as the total number to town meeting, that's another option. There's different ways to handle it, or you can continue to keep the tax rate down by not doing everything in the capital plan that these guys are recommending.
Great, we have options, okay. Who wants to begin the commentary on the?
I, I would.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for an amazing presentation, very thorough, awesome. I have a question. I've had a lot of outreach from people who live on Carriage Hill, and they're like, our sidewalks are a mess, we want to remove the sidewalks and make it lawn all the way to the road. And I'm always like, Dan's really busy, I don't know, I don't know when to bring this up, and I've asked them to email me, and I don't know if they've reached out to you, but how does that process work if somebody's like, you know, a development says, we want some cost savings, how, what, what's the process?
It's a great question. We've talked about this a lot, too. I mean, there's a lot of streets in town where, you know, probably when the neighborhood was developed, people's walking habits were different, there were less vehicles, there are sidewalks on both sides of the road, and we're never going to be able to afford to replace sidewalks on both sides of the road. Do we need them? Carriage Hill, there's not sidewalks on both sides of the road, there's only sidewalks on one. We've tossed that idea around ourselves, I, I guess I don't have an answer for you, I think we'd have to work with planning. I don't know how that falls into the town plan and development agreements and whatnot.
So, this community member said, well, but who do I, who do I talk to? Like, who should I send the email to? Because I said, you know, get together with your neighbors, send an email to the select board, or the town manager, or Dan, but what's the process for that kind of thing? Especially in relation to cost savings versus like, you haven't done this, you know?
I think the select board should decide.
You can, you can direct it to me, Amanda, and, and I'll get it to the right place.
I, I would just note, so like, one of the projects we're currently working on, which is a multi-year project, is the Oak Grove Corridor project. Before we started that project, we actually worked with Sue on doing community outreach. We had meetings at Oak Grove School.
I was there.
Yeah, we listened to the community on like, what they were looking for with traffic calming measures and sidewalks, and so that is something that we would continue to do when we, Dan and I have tried to create a, a capital plan, like, for ourselves, like, where do we go in year 2029, you know, what's that project, you're going to look like? And so, we're trying to create, create this process where it's outreach with community and then planning, another meeting just to show what those plans would be, and then trying to put in those pieces with the funding we have. So, with Oak Grove, folks really wanted sidewalks on both sides. We didn't have the funding for that, we really looked at the side that was in worst condition, we put that side in, and the road is going to be, hopefully, paved, which is the plan for springtime, with the understanding that there isn't funding for that other side of the sidewalk. So, we replaced the worst, left the other one, and so it's really, we are doing that outreach with community before we start a project in the area.
So, what I'm hearing is, first step, town manager, second step passes to you guys to, if you have the bandwidth and the time, maybe have some, a little community outreach, and then go from there. Is that right? Okay, great, awesome.
Oscar, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just a couple. Thanks, guys, that was another excellent presentation. When we talk about the, the chart with sort of, if we really want to get street paving moving in the right direction, it's, you know, 1.2 million dollars or whatever, to really start going in a, is that, when you do those numbers, that, does that include the cost of staffing? Because I imagine if we were replacing a ton more road every year than we do now, we'd also need staff to do that.
Right, and it does not. I mean, that's, that's just pure contracting, whatever the appropriate application for the pavement is. It doesn't include any underground utilities, sidewalks.
Okay.
You know, we've, we've really tried to focus on an area and get everything done as much as possible before we pave it.
Yeah, and then my other comment is really more for the board. I think this is, this capital carve-out has been sort of an obvious, one of the four or five big bullet points or question marks in this budget. I think we're going to have to look seriously at finding a way to fit most or all of it back in. If, and for the benefit of the public, why I feel that way is, capital expenses are things we know we're going to have to do, right? We know we have to replace these roads someday, we know we have to replace fire trucks and ambulances, and every year when we say, okay, we'll put off this thirty thousand dollars, that's money that's not going into a fund for a vehicle, and that bill's going to come due. So, I think we'll have to, or my goal is to find room for that stuff, because I think it's important, and I think we are, yeah, I mean, it'll look good on paper and then a retaining wall will fail, like we talked about today, John, and then we have to fix it, and it doesn't matter how much we set aside in capital. If we didn't set aside enough, then we're not prepared, and that's a problem, so I think that's going to be one of our challenges.
Yeah, and any guidance that the board can give us on what we come back with in January would be really helpful.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to like, find a magical way for it to be back in there. I think the five of us are going to have to wrestle with that.
I'm all about the magic option.
Well, if you have it.
Now you're telling us, Peter?
Yeah.
Oscar, magic?
Yeah, thank you so much for this presentation, and forgive me if you already just explained this, but the budget we, that you shared here is a bit different than what's in this binder, which is, and both are really helpful to have, this being the overall budget for, proposed budget or draft. And I'm looking, in this one, it says, and this is a question maybe for you, John, but in this one, it talks about a 57.8% increase from FY26 to FY27 for the department, and here it's a 25% increase, and just trying to understand that difference, and then also what's driving, what are the major drivers? And I think you already said it, some of it has to do with the, the new, the shifting of cost from Casella to the town with the compost collection, but maybe you could say more.
Yeah, so, the, what you're referring to, I believe, is the, the way we have realigned the budget to put the benefits for the DPW staff into the DPW budget. So, that's why I can now say with confidence that the DPW budget is about 14% of the overall town budget. But in the past, we couldn't, we, we wouldn't, wouldn't know what that was. We, it was, we thought it was, you know, something between 10 and 20%, you know, and now we can say it is, it actually is 14%. That's what we have proposed in this budget right now to be spent on Department of Public Works, not including the capital side. So, that's why it looks like an increase, because what was in those central benefits lines, which are now zeroed out, they've now been distributed across all of the departments so that you can get a truer, more transparent sense of what you're spending on what services.
Thanks, and now that you say it, I do remember you saying that before, thanks for the reminder.
And one thing to add as well, the other is the implementation of the Solid Waste program into our budget. So, that's another big factor that's now in our budget that was not before, and there's new line items that weren't in FY26 that are now in FY27 for that program. So, that's another reason.
So, like the, the carts, the, the startup costs and all the trucks?
Yeah, there's line items in there, but like, vehicle maintenance, safety equipment, those are some, there's a subcategory for compost, implementation basically, that's being added, and there's different line items that were talked about when Pete presented that budget, or that program, a couple of weeks ago, and they should be near the bottom of, if you're looking at our attachment, there's a brown shaded color, this is compost implementation, and it's all those line items directly to the side of that shaded area.
Peter, do you have any?
No, I, and a few questions have already been answered that have been asked that I was curious about, you know, thanks for the, the presentation. I mean, as far as talking about asphalt sidewalks and, and storm mitigation goes, it was top-notch PowerPoint stuff right there. So, thank you for doing that, thank you for coming out and enduring another, another fine, quick Barrow Select Board meeting. It's part of the magic, quick, see if it happens.
Okay, so, thank you, gentlemen. There's a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about. First is about retaining walls. If, if you were to compare retaining walls to dam safety, there's certain laws and rules regarding dam safety that the state ultimately has responsibility for because it's a risk, risk to life. But the same doesn't apply to retaining walls. And I ask why not? Because what, the topography of our town lends itself to so many retaining walls, but I would just think, and that you must have a calculation about the risk involved in which retaining walls are more urgently need, in need of repair than others. But I wondered, where's the state on this? Like, doesn't the state have an obligation to help municipalities with retaining walls that are at risk to the public?
It doesn't seem to be. There's some great, there's some grant programs that make some funds available, they're competitive grants, you know, like any...
How do you compete for?
Exactly, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of towns in Vermont that are up against the same thing. We recently, Darren and I went to a training in White River Junction, and we walked up a street that looked a lot like, oh, Union Hill maybe, with a retaining wall up the side of it, they closed it. You know, there were no houses on it, but they just don't have the funding to replace the walls, so they closed it. And, you know, I think that's, when we look at the 55 retaining walls that we own, that's what we're looking at. It's the condition, but what's the risk, too? You know, some of them, you know, if, if it fails, it's not the end of the world, but others, it cuts people off, or, or there's potential risk beneath it.
I mean, when we were talking about Black Mountain Road, for example, you know, there, there's a risk, and, but ultimately, the state's going to pay for that with water quality benefits, you know? So, I think that we should talk to our legislators about this problem and see if they can devote any state funding to it, because it's certainly an issue that's of statewide concern. The next thing I wanted to bring up is on, you know, I, for a very long time, really wanted the stormwater utility program, and I wondered, has anyone done a calculation of how much money that will generate once we get it, and whether or not we should like, borrow money so that we can get it up and running? Like, how much would that, how much would it cost, and how much benefit will derive? And so that, if we had it sooner, rather than later, we, we might, it might be worth it to us. Have you, have you thought about that?
We, we had a conversation with Bob about it, and I don't, we can't turn it into a revenue source, right? We can offset costs and staff time and whatnot with it. We haven't nailed down a number, there's a lot of different models on how you can charge and who you charge, and, you know, I think a lot of that would be the information that we'd need to work out between us and the board as we develop that program.
And so, and there are consultants whose specialty is this?
Yes.
And is there, are there state, is there state staff who can help us in, in lieu of consultants? And is there state funding to get this program up to ground?
There doesn't seem to be staff that can help us in lieu of consultants. There is an advisory committee that was formed, Brian Bannon is sitting on that. They're looking at more of a regional model, which might not necessarily fit us, but depending what comes out of that, maybe, maybe there could be some funding available down the road, we don't know yet.
Finally, there could be a regional program which we actually reap the benefits from.
Maybe.
And, and I think, you know what, I want to explore this whole capital budget item, whether we have it in or separate from the base budget. So, I'm sure that we'll be asking you more questions as that conversation continues. Let me ask the public, I see we have a, an online caller and other people who'd like to speak. We're going to start with Milson, and then go to Kate.
And thanks, that was a good presentation, I liked that, hearing that. This is about the stormwater utility. I don't, I only have a little bit of understanding, so I want to make sure I do understand what it is, and one thing I heard about it is that it has the potential to kind of spread the cost of stormwater utility management. For example, a program could be designed so, such that places that have big parking lots would pay more because they're generating more stormwater. The other thing is, the one is just confirming the understanding of that concept of stormwater utility. The other thing is that I heard that on May 27, the governor approved a bill, it's H481, and that is, the bill is to provide a framework and assistance in funding for municipalities to set up stormwater. So, to the question that you just asked about, can the state help, you know, I'm wondering if that could help. You know, I'm wondering if that could help. And then kind of related to that is the role of, is there, is there a role of V-Trans? Like, we have state highways running through Brattleboro that have stormwater runoff that then I would guess Brattleboro pays for because it's running into our town. And I'm not sure if there's help for that or not. But anyway, it's those three things. Maybe, you know, because of this new bill, there is funding, you know? I've, I've heard that there was funding. Senator Wendy Harrison is working on this. So maybe you are already in touch with her. But if not, she is the person that I've heard talking about that bill. That's it.
That's great, Milson. You know, I've always been in favor of this program because the state will pay more for the stormwater that we provide for them now. So the state would be a big component of those fees. Gentlemen, are you familiar with the bill that?
Not, not familiar.
I think it might have been Chittenden County, but I'm not sure.
But maybe one of you can reach out to Wendy and find out.
Yeah, she's working on another one, I think, that would be more statewide.
More statewide, okay. So finding out about that would be very helpful. And then the first item was?
The structure of it. Yeah, the Stormwater Utility, I guess, is exactly how you described it. Depending on how we set it up, there's a method for determining the impervious property that lies within each parcel and charging for that. And where it differs from a tax is there's a lot of tax-exempt properties that have large parking lots and, you know, schools, churches, hospitals, that we might be able to collect stormwater utility fees from because they're contributing. With V-Trans, we could charge them for the portion of the roads that contribute to our stormwater systems. There's, it's in statute that we can only charge them a percentage of our fees. But there's definitely a fee to be charged there. There are some areas like Putney Road, you know, a portion of that is state highway. And they have their own stormwater collection system that we have no part of. So I think those are the sorts of things we'd have to work out how that, how that works. Like, the properties that contribute to their system versus ours and who's contributing and non-contributing.
Great. Kate?
Thank you, Milson.
Kate O'Connor, Brattleboro. I just want to say the number that we're talking about with the supplemental capital budget number is $870,000. And I think it highlights the dire financial situation that we find our town in, that we can't fund something that we need to fund. And I think all of the five of you there, it means their tough decisions are going to have to be made throughout this entire budget. I also don't believe it can be a supplemental thing. It has to be in the general fund budget. We all need to know what the end number is and what those taxes are going to be. And so you have a hard job ahead of you. But I think everybody needs to hear $870,000. And I agree with Oscar, it should go in the budget. But that means really, really hard decisions are going to have to be made because the people of this community cannot, they can't afford the 4.4%, which is, we're floating around, which is not an honest number because the budget isn't really 4.4% increase. We can't afford that. So I just want to put that out there, $870,000. And I believe them when they say they need it. We just have to figure out what we do.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak about the Public Works budget? All right.
May I, please?
You want a second bite at the apple? Go right ahead.
Yeah, just that, one of the priorities that we set this summer was fiscal responsibility and health. And from what you've shared, it sounds like investing in our roads and our sidewalks and our retaining walls and all this infrastructure is an investment in fiscal responsibility and health in that it makes good use of the studies that have been done already for the time and resources that were already put in and invested. And this potentially stalling on delaying some of these projects could risk losing some of that work or maybe there's some momentum. I'm curious if that is, if, if I am understand that, if that is a concern? Like, if, you know, the studies that have been done, can that be shelved for five years or however many years and it will be just as good? Or is there institutional memory, like, from the people who've been involved and that you really are going to be losing by not taking advantage of that work right away? Do you understand what I'm trying to get at? What's the cost of delaying those projects?
I think both. I mean, I think it's specific to each project, right? I mean, if we're talking about intersection studies that have to do with traffic counts and everything like that, that has potential to change. But the consultant's also, you know, thinking about change when they develop those. I think the biggest thing we have to stand to lose is the cost increase. You know, I mean, nothing's getting cheaper. So the further we push these out, then, you know, maybe this consultant worked on it five years ago and we're hiring someone new that needs to get up to speed. And prices have increased, so you're losing time. And, you know, you have increased costs and construction costs have gone up. And, I mean, someone mentioned fixing stuff when it fails. Some of this stuff's just going to fail.
And one last thing we haven't really talked much about is some of this funding here is actually a grant match for a lot of grants in town. You know, Sue's working on a project down on Bridge Street, which could need some funding. It may not, it may not be there. And so we're trying to figure out now if, where we're sitting now, what projects we're already working on that will need matches, right? And I mean, we already started a process with this grant or this grant. And so we're, that's what Dan and I have been working on lately is we've got to make sure we leave X amount of dollars in here so we can cover the match on this grant. And so that's, that's another big topic here is the grant match.
Okay, so let's wrap this up. John, do you have any thoughts?
Well, just, so I'm not really taking away any guidance for coming back on anything different from DPW tonight. But I guess maybe if board members want to reach out to me and let me know what you're thinking as you have time to absorb this and, and we can bring you back something in January if you want to see any changes, or we can just bring back the same.
I'm happy to give input now if that's, would be useful. I will say that when I first heard the idea of having a separate capital budget, I thought, well, you know, that, that sounds good, that sounds good to me. After having heard from a couple of members of the public about this, you know, the concerns that were just raised, you know, the Oscars raised, Kate's mentioned, I, I do have concerns about, okay, well, how are we picking and, we're setting a precedent. If we're, we haven't done that. My understanding, if it's, if I'm, great, that's unprecedented to take things that would normally be in the budget, like sidewalk repair, sidewalk maintenance or road maintenance. I mean, these things are usually in the operational, this, this budget, right?
No. So I had a conversation with the town attorney and asked him that exact question. He said, no, in the past, the town has done specific projects or capital items as separate articles on the warrant because the select board wasn't sure if the community would support it or not. So it's not unprecedented. It's, it's very much been done in the past according to the town attorney. You could decide to do a supplemental request of $100,000. Or like Kate O'Connor said, you could do it at $800,000. It's really completely up to you guys what you would, might want to ask the community. But you don't have to do that. You could incorporate it into this budget or you could leave it the same and keep the tax rate down.
Doesn't this budget have a certain minimum amount of capital sidewalk, roadway? And then the supplemental is above and beyond that?
Yes, there is a capital plan before you, which is funded in this proposed budget at 1.8 million. There's another, maybe $400,000 that DPW had asked for for projects, which we took out in the proposed budget because we didn't think that the tax, that the taxpayers wanted to pay that much additional. But that's completely a policy decision. And it's up to you guys if you want to incorporate that into your budget or if you want to ask the taxpayer separately whether they want to do that. Like, what's the value to people is sort of the issue.
Can you remind me of the, when do we get, when is the final department presentation meeting? Or is this it?
This is it.
Okay, great.
So this is the time if you have questions or if you want to drill down into what it means to do something or not do something.
I don't personally have any direction to give at this meeting, but I think probably at the next meeting. Now that we've seen everything, we've talked to every department, we can go away and put our thoughts in order.
Okay, thank you.
Great. And so it's just important for the board to understand that these presentations, while there may not be a motion about them, what they are is guidance for us. And then we in turn give guidance to John for the direction of the budget. Isaac, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm leaving this meeting clear on the numbers here and what they mean. And this, the budget that is, that you've prepared for this evening has the FY '25 actuals at 2.4 million. And in this overall budget for the town, it's listed as 1.6 million. And I just wanted to under, the FY '25 actuals. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what that difference is. Is it that in one, the FY, in one it includes benefits and in one it doesn't?
I'd have to look at the documents that you're looking at.
Okay.
Maybe we could look at it offline and explain it to you.
Sounds good, thanks.
All right, let's take a five-minute break. We're already 35 minutes later than our schedule, but five minutes won't kill anybody.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks.
Thirty-five minutes, it's not really that bad.
And let me welcome Carol Allo to discuss the Recreation and Parks FY27 general fund budget. Carol, welcome.
Hi Carol. Good evening. Here this evening to review our 2627 budget, just to put it right up, right up front here, we're putting a request in of $1,447,637. That represents a 40% increase. Please don't take too deep of a breath, I will explain that 40%, that 40% has to do with, much like you have been hearing in the other budgets, where benefits are allocated, where they were previously allocated elsewhere in the budget, it's now reflected in the town budget. Of that 40% increase, 32 of, 32% of it belongs to the benefits, which is $330,554. The remaining 8% is comparable to our budget of FY26. As we go through this, as I go through this presentation, I'll outline where you'll see those increases. But first of all, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our department and what we represent, who we represent, and what we offer to the community. I'd like to first start out with our staffing. As far as full-time staff, there is a director, assistant director, a program coordinator, administrative assistant, a park supervisor, the three park maintenance staff. We rely heavily on our seasonal employees, which is inclusive of skate guards, cashiers, water safety instructors, lifeguards, day camp staff, pool checkers, evening supervisors, and seasonal park maintenance. These are all high school and college students. In addition to our paid staff, many of the programs that we offer, we would not be able to offer it if it wasn't for the hundreds of volunteers that we, that we utilize for our programming and special events. If we had to put them all on the payroll, we wouldn't be sitting here this evening, or at least I probably would not. In addition to the staffing and volunteers, we also contract with, we call them contracted service providers. So they're not town employees, but they're contracted service providers that are providing a service to the community, so that we're be able, that we're able to offer the programs and services we do, which includes positions such as gymnastics instructor, fitness instructors, our chest instructor, skating instructor, paintings, painting instructors. Many of those are all contracted service providers. And again, that's what helps us make up what we, what we're able to do and offer to the community. When it comes to programming, I feel we have a great, we have a broad spectrum of programs and services that we provide to the community, which includes nine youth sports, over 20 youth after-school and summer programs, over 15 adult leagues and programs, 10 special events, over 30 programs and special events for senior citizens, and we schedule and reserve 16 facilities and rooms that the department manages and maintains. The Park Division oversees several properties throughout town with 60-plus acres, and that includes all of our playgrounds, five traffic islands, five cemeteries, 12 mini parks, community garden on Stockwell Drive, West River Park, the Kiwanis Shelter, Living Memorial Park, swimming pool, which please note that's a typo up there, it's a 300,000 gallon swimming pool, the Nelson Withington skating facility, the Larry Robinson small fry tee ball field, the dog park, outdoor basketball courts, Kiwanis Shelter, Rotary Disc Golf Course, Perseverance Skate Park, 250 Bird Street, upper and lower field at Liffring Memorial Park, the softball fields, and I have an item that was missed on here, and that's the Fred Harris Court, which is our, our six new pickleball courts. As I move through the budget and start talking about, you know, some of the changes that you might see throughout the budget, I carefully reviewed our spending trends over the past three years, and adjusted several of the department line items as follows. If, as you look throughout the Recreation and Parks Department budget, you'll see that we're made up for many, in many different units. In all those units, whether it be swimming pool, skating rink, Gibson-Aiken Center, in the parks, all of the electric, heating, and utilities went up by 5%. Park gasoline item went up by 5%. One item that is not in here, that, nothing that, one of my bullets that got missed that I want to highlight, is our, in Parks, the lawn and tree care budget increased by 28% with the percentage, the percent sounds way worse than the dollar amount, the dollar amount is $2,000. That is because the Tree Board identified some concerns at the Rattleboro Common, and we've incorporated that into this budget. One of the biggest things that has driven up the increase in this budget this year is we are requesting a new park maintenance position for a total cost of $81,336. That includes the benefit package that comes with a new position. I'd like to dive in, in a bit, I'll dive in a little bit deeper as to why we are requesting that, but first I'd want to continue with some of the highlighted changes. As I mentioned before, we rely heavily on high school and college kids, and most all of those are individuals that are paid a minimum wage. And every year come January 1st, we are all, we're always getting hit with that cost, not cost of living, but minimum wage increase. For example, this year, it's at 1401 at this time, and it will increase to 1442. So as everybody that comes through the door, you know, we're getting hit with that minimum wage. As we discussed in a previous, at the last Select Board meeting, Parks Program Supplies increased by $5,000. That is to accommodate the minimum increase that's now out there for the fireworks display on the 4th of July. Do you want to highlight again, as I did in other meetings, in the previous meeting, that annually re-raised $7,000 to $8,000 to help offset the costs of those, of those As we dig deeper into the additional park maintenance position, as you all know, I've been sitting in my position, in my chair, for a long time, and it's been 35 years since I have asked for a new position, a new full-time position in Recreation and Parks. Over the years, we have continued to take on little bits and little pieces along the way, you know, and I'm going to go back to when Plenty Park was added. Can you take that on? Of course we can take that on. You know, can we, we're going to build a new West River Park. Yeah, we're going to take on West River Park. No, not asking for any additional funding. All those little slivers of the pie have just continued to fill up the whole plate, and now the plate is starting to overflow. And in a minute, I'll go to what all those tasks were that we have picked up over the past years, and how now it's becoming, you know, a burden on the full-time staff and being able to do their day-to-day job, and the park supervisor being, having to do, not being able to supervise, and having to be very much hands-on. It certainly is a hands-on position, but he's not having that time to do his supervisory responsibilities. It seems like we mostly are putting fires out and not looking at how to maintain facilities. Some of those additional services that we have added over the past 35 years, a couple of them which I just mentioned, but I'd like to highlight again, is Plenty Park. We added the water playground at Living Memorial Park Pool. We took on the responsibilities of the bank management at Citizens Bridge. We took on 10 acres at West River Park. We added a skate park. We recently took on 250 Bird Street, and we added a dog park, and we recently took on Exit 2 and Main Street Traffic Islands. And in addition to all that, we've continued to help out with encampment cleanups, maintained Sharps disposal stations, and 10 dog waste stations. All of these which add to our community and to, you know, to what Wreckin' Parks has to offer, and what this community means, what these programs and services mean to the community. I wouldn't turn back any of them, but at the same time, our plate is becoming fuller and fuller, and we're starting to split, and we need, we need some help at this time. I do want to mention, last year, we were going to, we were asking for this position, but we all know the position that we were in last year, so at that time, that is one of the first thing, that, things that I pulled off the table during the last budget year, and felt that I needed to bring it back at least before you this evening, so you could hear those. Moving out of the general operations and into capital, we have three items in this year's capital budget. One is to replace a 2015 pickup truck that was also cut out of, out of our current budget. It's well beyond its years of replacement, as you probably can't see on, on the truck there, but the bed is starting to rust out, which, we're starting to lose its trade value, that $55,000, the longer we wait, is going to become a larger, a larger number. The 2011 Massey Ferguson compact tractor is in this budget for $18,000. The current one has over 1,200 hours on it, and we are seeing considerable front end, we'll need considerable front axle and transmission work. Also cut out of the FY26 budget is, was the replacement of the 2013 Bobcat Zero Turn that has over 1,000 hours on it as well, and we're starting to see where the, we're seeing engine failure and excessive oil consumption, so we want to take care of things before they become an emergency. I wanted to bring up the next item, it's not in this year's budget, but I don't want it to become a surprise for next year when we have the discussion. It at least, I want to get you thinking about it ahead of time, is I'm hoping to have a lengthy discussion next year at this time about the pool replacement at Living Memorial Park, before we don't have a pool and we're unable to operate the current one. But I, you know, it is in the budget for next, you know, FY28, but I wanted to let you know that some of the things that are coming up on your, up on the horizon. In addition to our operating side of things, we also have the revenue side. This year, we have, we're anticipating that we'll bring in $315,900, which is approximately 30% of our expenses, not including benefits. If we were to, if we were to pull that out, if you add the benefits into there, you're looking at closer to a 22% versus 30%. In closing, we all here work and live in a wonderful community. We have great programs and services, along with facilities, that add to the quality of life for our citizens. I'm hoping during these difficult economic times, we'll be able to continue to offer the level of services we provide. I know that during challenging times, we need to con- continue to make sure our services are accessible and affordable for our citizens and our community. With that, I would like to open up for any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you very much, Carol. I'll, I'll let our, my colleagues begin, and then I'll, I'll say a few words. Amanda?
I want to say thank you, Carol. I think of you, like, my husband and I are dairy farmers and veggie farmers, like no days off, and Carol, it's like you take no days off, you work so hard, and you've worked so hard for so many years, and just brought so much life and vitality to our community, and have consistently made offerings by Wreckin' Parks affordable to our community in a, in a really, really major way, and kept that commitment over the long term, and appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, thanks Carol, just a couple questions. This is more for next year, but I'm wondering if, do you know what it's costing us to, the sort of leakiness of the pool? Do you know, like if the pool didn't leak at all, what the cost differential would be there?
I think the biggest thing with losing water, you know, we're talking about losing about a million dollars, a million gallons of water.
Yeah.
Okay? It's a 300,000 gallon pool. So, is the dollar amount large? The dollar amount is not large, but it's what is happening to the infrastructure of the facility? And where is that water going, and what is the larger impact to the facility? I think that is the thing that we need to be worried about. I think the dollar amount of the water we're losing is small compared to the impact of the infrastructure issues.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I just have a general question, maybe even for John. The whole idea of an older vehicle that is losing trade-in value, there's a trade-off there that I'm just curious how we navigate, because I feel like, you know, a normal person who has an old car generally, and doesn't have a lot of money, generally just sort of runs it until it drops. And it's not, it's not like it is financially cheaper to trade it in after 11 years or something like that. So I'm wondering, I mean, obviously we want everyone to have the best equipment and to have it replaced as soon as possible. Are there opportunities to stretch there, or are we straight up, would we straight up be losing money by replacing less frequently, or is there an opportunity there?
Yeah, I think in some cases, we, we'd probably end up losing money. It really comes down to like the maintenance.
Yeah.
So, our vehicles are run hard, they're not like, just your, yours or my vehicle. And so, what it, what it starts to be a question for Carol is, do we replace the engine in this vehicle? And then the next thing is that the brake, you know, everything goes on, you know, something else, and it ends up costing more and more, and the cost of that maintenance ends up being more than if we had just invested in the routine replacement of our vehicles on a, on a cycle.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, Carol, this is a great presentation. I appreciate it.
Gentlemen to my left. That includes you, Peter.
Oh, I'm sorry, remember I'm deaf, I'm deaf in this ear. Yeah, my, my concerns again were with the leaking pool, I know that came up a couple of years ago, and we're still talking about it, so, like, those concerns are always sort of right at the forefront. I also understand, like for something that's only open for a finite amount of time, jumping a big capital project into it right now, so, so thank you for pushing the pause on that for at least another year before we have to discuss that. You know, the vehicles and the, the tractors and all of that, to echo what Oscar said, it's always nice to have the, the top-of-the-line stuff, but I think we may, we may want to look at some of this stuff when we get into the throes of, of the budget process, about trying to maybe shore them up for another year, just to save a little money. And, and I also understand what that means for, for a vehicle that has started to get on there in years. Like you, you hope to fix it, you hope the fixes stay. We had this issue just this year where we sort of rolled the dice, didn't work, we had to replace the vehicle, so we did. Maybe that's, maybe that's a way we approach it again this year. But, yeah, so, I mean, but, you know, again, I always go back to what, what your department means to this community, and, and how much good you do into the community, and, and what you do, and how some of the people who really need that, who can't afford to leave or go anywhere with it, this becomes sort of a vacation spot for their kids, a break for parents. So, you know, thank you for constantly continuing to be there and continuing to take on more weight every time it's thrown at you. But, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Isaac?
Yeah, echoing what colleagues have said in terms of appreciation, I mean, I'm struck by the fact that in 35 years, you haven't increased the staff, but you've taken on a whole lot more responsibilities. Could you share what the impact would be for not adding an additional staff member to your team? What, what might that mean in terms of what residents of Rattleboro might experience differently, besides the lower? differently, besides the lower, not as big of a tax increase?
I think the biggest thing is the staff that are, that are being overworked and torn into many different directions, and there are things that are getting put off, you know? You know, we all get it, we'll be in the middle of trying to, you know, groom and maintain facilities, and then we're getting pulled off because it's more important to get downtown and pick up something that may be unsafe for those that are using a park downtown, and then we're, you know, we're just constantly getting pulled in different directions. Projects are getting deferred, we're having to hire out projects that we do do and can't do them in-house, and that's been going on for a couple of years now, and that also adds to the budget.
Thank you.
I just had a couple, one more thing, so, just a question, so, is the tractor used for mowing as well as the Zero Turn?
Mm-hmm.
Or, okay, and what other purposes does the tractor?
The tractor has a lot of jobs, you know, like a workhorse, you know? You know, it's used out on the ball fields, you know, dragging the fields, you know, carting the equipment out to the field so that you can maintain them, a lot of that is inside the park type work that it's, that's done, so it does a lot, has a lot of different responsibilities.
Okay, cool.
As, you know, the Zero Turn, and again, you'll probably see us drive around town, a lot of that stuff is going onto the trailer, going out into many of our parks, you know, because as we rotate throughout the community, you probably see that on and off, our vehicles and in our trailer and such.
Great. So, Carol. Thank you again.
Thank you.
It is amazing that in 35 years, you haven't added staff, it's mind-boggling, but also mind-boggling is the sheer number of new program elements in that time. And, and I know last year, we asked you to increase revenue, and you did increase revenue on various programs, and, and I, I share Peter's concern that, you know, the children of this town, and, and all the people in this town really need all of your facilities and use them greatly. Is there anything that you can identify in terms of a fee that you didn't raise last year, or some new initiative that, that can help on the revenue side?
Yeah, I mean, I want to talk about the fee that we raised last year, because that hit every single program. You know, when we talked about that facility use fee, that hit every single participant and every single program, so I think that's real important to mention, you know, we, and we raised the fee at the, at the skating rink, but that facility use fee went across, across the board, so that, I think if we, I don't think it would be in our best interest to do anything like that again. But one thing that I'm working on currently is how we can increase some advertising at the skating rink. And we're kind of doing a pilot right now, where I've been working with a local vendor on, we did it for Brattleboro Youth Hockey and Brattleboro Union High School, and they're basically, that, we're their home rink, and what we've done is we have their logos and the name of their program on the two benches that are at the skating rink. In the next week or so, I've been working with Pure Green Teas, and they designed everything that they put onto the boards, and they're going to be putting that onto the boards, and then I'm going to be able to say to local businesses, hey, look at that, isn't, you know, so it's got something to sell. Right now, I just got white boards, and I can't even tell you what it's going to look like, but because we're invested in the logo for Brattleboro Hockey Association and the Brattleboro Union High School, and we got wording as well, people can see what words look like and what logos look like, and then, can I sit here and tell you that's going to turn over $10,000? I can't, I can't. But in a year from now, I might be able to have a better conversation with you about that. So we are looking at a different way, a different way to bring in income that's not going to have a direct impact on the people that are already being charged, but other people, maybe somebody like yourself, Peter, you might want to advertise.
I thought you were chucking eyes at me.
No, I'm looking, set on to you, straight for now. But, you know, that's, that's an example, and we're going to be able to say, hey, look, and then, we're also going to see how it handles the puck, you know? Am I going to charge you big bucks and at the end of the season, I got to go pay for it all over again? So we're going to be able to, you know, we, we're in the middle of, of a trial period.
Well, that's excellent. Thank you for that.
Carol, we don't have to have this conversation right now, but, you know, like, driving revenue and increasing revenue and finding revenue is kind of the sort of charge that I'm on right now, and if there's one thing I know, it's advertising. So, at some point in time, maybe I'll swing by and we can kind of talk about it a little bit, maybe, maybe I could be helpful, maybe I could be a hindrance, and if it's the latter, I'll leave.
Yeah, hey, just got to have, start somewhere and have a conversation.
All right.
And also, just in the, since it's a public meeting, I've been wanting to ask since the fireworks, you know, you presented the fireworks budget, would it be possible to charge people to attend the fireworks display? I would volunteer myself as a select board member to, to sit at that table and say, that'll be $3.
Well, I'll tell you what I do do, yeah.
I know that you have, but I mean, you could also make other people do that.
Yep, yep.
If we want to capture some revenue.
Yeah, but I, I think, you know, you've often talked about the spirit of volunteerism, you know, and I think that there's already a system in place that Carol has for, to raise money, and I think that we can all be very effective in spreading the word about increasing, raising money at the front end, working with the O'Connor family, and Kate's nodding her head, and, and, you know, I think we should work with a system that's already in place, and explain to the community that tariffs and so forth have caused this increase, but I know also that, you know, you could be one of the people walking around with a little tin can.
You can give me a bucket, you can give me a bucket.
I think, I think that in itself, it would be a better way of going at it, because there's so many places to enter the park. Where's the entrance? The whole place is an entrance, you know, so that's, that's the biggest challenge, but I welcome anybody to come out and join me. Matter of fact, I'll be happy to have a competition with you and say, let's, game on.
Game on, game on.
Game on. I already have a competition, maybe with somebody on the Brattleboro Goals Fourth Committee, but he always seems to come in second place. He likes to think he comes in first, but I think he comes in second.
All right, let's open this conversation up to members of the public who would like to comment. Is there anyone? Kate?
I will say Kevin and I are going to beat Carol next year, we already put that down. I'm only mentioning this because Carol happened to be the first person to bring it up, so it's not targeted at Carol, but we, there are multiple departments that want to hire new people, and I think that that's a global conversation that you need to have. Our FY '26 budget, we're about 66% of the budget goes to personnel, and while I appreciate how it's, we now know, as John said, we can tell how much each department costs, we have lost track of what our overall personnel costs are, and how that has changed from FY '25, '26, and in the '27 budget. So I hope there's going to be a global conversation about our personnel costs, I think that's super important, because we may not be able to hire all the people that all the departments want, even though they may really need them, that, that's a really deep conversation. Second of all, and I know this may not be exactly what you were saying, but we keep talking about this time next year, we'll talk about the pool, you cannot wait until December of 2026 to talk about the pool for the next year's budget. It's too late, because you're going to get forced into having to do something. That has, that's a huge conversation for this town. It is in relation to the budget, but it's a bigger conversation, and you cannot wait until we're under the gun and we're going to be forced to do something. So I would urge that conversation to start a lot sooner than in December of 2026.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? Anyone else in the room? Well, that leaves me to thank you once again, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
So, again, if there's guidance.
Right.
I'd love to hear it, or talk to me offline.
So, just to clarify, when we were on break, do we not have one more meeting with, like, finance and et cetera, and?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, last, before I was asking, when is our final one of these departments coming before the select board meetings? Is that?
I thought you were asking, does the department come back?
Yeah, no, 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 I meant, is it next meeting? Is that our last one?
Yep, we have the rest of the departments at the next meeting, and then your first meeting in January would be, any changes that you've suggested, we can start to bring those back.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah, I, I would just say that I, I think that idea of having a conversation about staff in general, like, looking at what is the cost and what, some of these global, global questions would be useful, like, around personnel costs, this question about the capital, capital budget, what we're shifting from operating, operation, budget to capital, some of those big questions, I mean, even the percent, what is the, the cap that we're, is there a particular percentage increase in taxes, cap that we're aiming for? I mean, even, like, questions that we discussed at that listening session that we heard from the public, it would be, I think, useful to be able to discuss even those questions as a board.
Yeah, maybe we look at the agenda for the next meeting and see how crazy it looks, and possibly try to put a sort of general select board discussion after the department presentations.
Okay.
But, you know, who knows?
Yeah, let's see.
What that meeting's looking like, but.
Well, we'll know in the agenda setting committee.
Yep.
All right, let me welcome Starletronica to the table to discuss the FY '27 library
Thank you. And because I'm not a member of the public, I didn't get up and say anything, but, oh my goodness, Carol LaLotte, right? I am constantly in awe of her, and, and my brothers at DPW as well, and everybody else in town, but it's always amazing, because Carol and I are sort of sisters in our services, and it amazes me all that she does. So, I'd like to start tonight with thanks. Thank you for having me on to talk about libraries, because there's nothing I would rather talk about than, nothing I would rather do than talk about libraries, and especially our library. And even though it means I'm missing my second favorite thing to do in this town at this time of year, which is We Sing Noel, but, but I've been promised I can watch it online later. So I also want to thank the wonderful and talented Seth Thomas for making my presentation look good. So I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't think we can see the little tagline under that, but I think it says, "We contain multitudes." And so to demonstrate that, I do have a few announcements to make, just about things that are going on the rest of this week at the library. We will be tomorrow having rhyme time for preschoolers and their caregivers, flower pots, saucer garden, makerspace, and then Friday, we'll have a 12-foot by 12-foot section of the AIDS quilt, which includes a panel with Ron Squires, who was the first openly gay legislator from Vermont. Saturday, we'll be making mini crankies, and Sunday, the mini, is the deadline for the mini masterpieces flash fiction, so, so that's just a brief range of, of what we do at the library. So our library does a lot, and can we go to the next slide? Let's see if I can see what it says. All right. So there you can see our vision, our mission, and our values, and the vision of Brooks Memorial Library is that all members of the community engage with the library to spark curiosity, enrich lives, and achieve aspirations. And it is my belief that, I truly believe with absolutely no exaggeration, which I am prone to, that anyone's life can be enhanced by engaging with the public library. We absolutely respect, value, need, even cherish every single one of our emergency responders, but we also hope that no one ever needs to call them. However, everyone can find something of value at the library, and if you don't think so, I invite you to come and see me there, and we'll look for it together. So, next slide. So here is our, here is our operating income, and as you have heard, and will continue to hear in these presentations, the inclusion of staff benefits significantly increases the total amount of each department's budget. I think it's a wonderful thing for transparency, it helps me see, you know, where all of the money is going. In the library's case, that increased it by $286,700, no, $286,785, or 20, 28% of our total budget. However, because the majority of our staff is part-time, they receive little or no benefits, so it doesn't have the same devastating effect that it has on some other department budgets. We also have an endowment, thank goodness, thanks to the largess of the citizens of Brattleboro and their appreciation of the library, we have been, we have benefited from some really lovely bequests. And then, using best practices, the trustees who oversee the endowment withdraw, take an annual draw of 4%, and that is used to fund programs and any kind of professional development, so, all, and then our other, our other source of income are the friends of the library, and good friends they are, because they fund the rest of the programs. They, this year, applied for a grant to replace all of the public computers. Now, public computers are essential equipment in a modern public library, and certainly absolutely needed and always in use in this community, but they were able to secure a grant so that we will replace all of those computers, which were badly in need of replacement, they hadn't been replaced in 10 years, and we'll also be getting new laptops and some Wi-Fi hotspots with that grant, so that's a tremendous thing. So all of our programs are funded by either endowment funds or the friends of the library, no public funds go to that. Okay, I think we're ready to move on. All right, trying to keep up with myself here. Okay, so, our resources, and you can see the vast variety of things that we share with the community. The community shares with it, with each other, and that's the whole premise of libraries, it's about sharing. And so, the public buys things, the public buys resources, purchases resources, and then everybody in the community has access to them. I will say that some of our more innovative resources and materials, such as snowshoes and the garden tools and the ice cream maker that you see in the picture, all of those things were purchased with grant funds or were donated. All right. Okay, Seth, I think we're ready to keep going. So, very much, okay, so, this is, these, this is our services slide, and we are second in the state for the number of open hours, and that is consistent with what we hear from our community. The community wants to be able to access the library, that is the most important thing. Every time I talk to people, people come in, a grandmother will come in in the evening to get books for her grandparent, her grandchildren, and thank us for being open. People want to be able to come into the library, and so we, so far, we have been able to maintain that. The person you see in the slide there is our ILL clerk, who is demonstrating how far-flung she will go to, to track down materials for people, and we are the, we are first in the state for ILLs received, so that means we- So, that means we get more books for our patrons from other libraries than anybody else in the state. We are second for ILLs sent, because we also have a very robust collection. We are second in the state for public computing sessions, second only to Burlington. And we are first in the state for Wi-Fi sessions, computer sessions divided by allotted population, and Wi-Fi sessions divided by allotted populations. And this is absolutely critical, and, and the need grows every single day, especially with things like, you know, now the DMV is very rarely open, so people come to the library so they can get their temporary license, they can get their temporary registration, they can get their temporary license plate. People file their job applications, they file their taxes, they print off labels, because a lot of people don't have printers at home anymore. So, we really see the, the need for that. Okay, and now I'm ready for the next slide. Okay, so here you see our staffing. You can see that we have some full-time staff, some professional librarians, and then some And, and we are not asking for a new position, however, we are asking for a little more leeway in bringing in our substitute, because oftentimes we are staffed to the bone, and then someone gets sick and needs to go home, or someone gets sick and can't get in. And there hasn't been a case yet that we've had to close the library, but we've been really close. There have been times where, you know, I'll come in and work a sixth-day Saturday to keep the library open, because we are that tightly staffed, and then when somebody's sick, everything falls apart, and those other jobs don't get done, sort of like what Carol was talking about. You get pulled in another direction for something immediate, and the, the other, the background work doesn't get finished at the library. And we do make the most of volunteers. As you can see there, we have 30 volunteers, or 35 volunteers, that contributed over 700 hours this year. And all of our shelving is done by volunteers, the tool shed is completely staffed by a volunteer, the e-bike program is mostly handled by volunteers. Okay, I'm ready for the next one. And here are just some of our collaborations. So, this is really important, because their collaborations with us so strengthen what we can do. They so fortify our services to the community, and in turn, by working with them, we also strengthen them. So, it's that whole model of really strengthening community by building those regenerative roots, so that we hold one another up, and we make one another stronger. So, these are just some of the partners we work with. It's not an exhaustive list, but it's pretty impressive, I think. But every single one of those collaborations has a person attached to it, at least one person. It takes people to make those connections, and to nurture them, and maintain them, just as it takes people to, to acquire those materials that we saw in previous slides and perform those services. So, really, the library's all about people. All right, so here is where municipal funds go. As you can see, most of it's salary, salary and benefits. It's only, I believe that says 3% goes to materials. Yeah. So, only 3% goes to materials. The rest goes to salary and benefits, and just keeping the, the lights on, literally, and the building heated, the building cleaned and maintained, and although most of the actual improvements to the building have been paid for by endowment funds. All right. And, yes, we can go to the next one. Okay, so I, I put some values in here to give you a sense of what the community receives from the library for free, that they would have to otherwise pay for. And so, I checked the, the rates to rent rooms from Busy Town, and I based it on, you know, average prices of books. We, we provide passes to the skating rink for people to go, the Friends of the Library pay for that, also taking a trip to Mass Moca, which is also funded by the Friends of the And then sometimes there are dinosaurs in the library. And really, what's the value of that? And then, as many of you have heard me say over and over again, really, the essence of the library and the critical nature of the library is that community connection, and that's what we, that's priceless, as they say. Okay, so capital expenses, we don't have that many. We've been in the budget for several years to get the windows in the children's room replaced, and to, and to reconstruct the soffit and fascia around the building. We als, the endowment budget does fund any kinds of real improvements to the building, including several years ago, they paid for half of the installation of the new HVAC system, which cost a bundle, as you can imagine. And it, we, the endowment budget paid to create those small meeting rooms that people use and that are almost always in use. I know that several of you have tried to reserve them, and know how hard that is to do. And so, any, oh, they also added a restroom downstairs. All those things came out of the endowment budget. They are also paying the project manager, so, oh, so next year, we are going to construct a, a tiny little office in the children's room, so that the children's staff can actually focus on their work that they need to, in case somebody's reading Dogman to themselves over and over, right out in front of their desk, or, or just, the other day, there was a kid that was in there just chanting, "Hot dog, hot dog, hot dog," for, I don't know, half an hour. So, this gives them a private place to go and really get their work done. So, we will be doing that, and we are also paying a project manager to oversee the third item on the list, which is the capital improvements grant. So, that is a federally funded grant that we have. There's no match to it, and we've, you may have noticed that we have a new roof from it already, and some other process, progress has been made along, but really, it's going to hit full force early next year. And Seth, if you could go to the next slide. Okay, so that's a drawing of what that capital project will entail. And as you can see, a lot of it is replacing the sidewalk in front, on Main Street, in front of the library on Main Street. So, that will help DPW out. We'll also be expanding and reconfiguring the ADA approach from the back, and bring that up to code, which didn't happen, you know, which it is not at the moment. And we'll be having a covered-back seating area with Wi-Fi, so that people, in nice weather, can sit out there, have their meetings, watch their movies, write their novels, all those things in the back of the library. And we'll really be expanding the seating area, because we run out of room frequently at the library, and this, the only place to go was out. So, we talked, we talked to people about going up, and they, they didn't think it was realistic. So, I will say that the library drives economic development. We help people with their job resumes and their job applications. We provide a candid database, which is the Foundation Directory, which helps people, grant seekers and funding, people looking for funding, find that. It's one of only two places in Vermont, Burlington is the other. And we also, we met recently with a cohort of people who are starting small businesses in Brattleboro, to let them know the resources that the library has that can support them in that. I would posit that the library contributes greatly to public safety, that we have a lot of people that hang out at the library and, and entertain themselves, and find a nice calming atmosphere there. Chief Hardy has said over and over again that quality of life is crime prevention, and I know that people, realtors and lawyers have told me that clients, prospective clients, prospective residents of theirs come in and ask, "How's the library?" Because they use that as a, a measure of the community. So, in my time, I have seen that libraries have evolved from place to presence to the pulse of the community. And Brooks Memorial Library is steeped not only in literature and literacy, but it is, which is manifested in the elation when a child cracks that code and can read on their own. It has, it embodies the exuberance of Storytime or Silver Circus, the camaraderie and carrying on of the Stitcher Group, that meets every Saturday where laughter and creativity flow freely. The enthusiastic but respectful disagreements of community members who may disagree but keep reading and discussing to understand the Constitution and the world. The exhilaration of learning to juggle in the main reading room, and the delight of soaring paper airplanes across the same. The need for, to be, the need to be in a warm place and to be with people who are not judgmental and can provide a kind word, a snack, and a pair of socks. The excitement of getting your hands on the new Louis Penny. The relief of the patron who has been connected with a professional who can help them navigate a growing need for assistance as they age. The gratitude of the job applicant who has updated their resume. The determination of someone who has just left a financial empowerment session. And the quiet, fond group remembrances of a beloved member of the Stamp Club and the community who passed away recently. We see all that at the library, and we embrace every bit of it, because that variety, that energy, that compassion, that commitment to community, that's Brattleboro. That's who we are. That is our brand, and that's our library. It's something everybody can benefit from and be proud of. And that's why, when people come here, they say, next slide. And that is the work of the talented Cynthia Hoden. So, to end the way I began, thank you. Everything that the library accomplishes is a group effort. Thanks to the Select Board for hearing me out, to town staff for their support, always. Oh, my goodness, every department contributes to the success of the library. To the steadfast stalwart Board of Trustees for their wisdom and guidance and vision. To the Friends of the Library who are fun and fabulous and work so hard. And speaking of hardworking, the truly incredible Brooks Memorial staff that did all the work represented there, and pulled together the information to present it coherently. And finally, and foremost, this really, really remarkable community that appreciates and supports the possibilities of a public library. There is truly no better place to be a library. So, thanks.
Start, thank you very much. I'll entertain comments from my colleagues. Isaac, you want to start?
Sure. Thanks so much for painting a picture of what's happening in the library. Could you say again what the budgetary increase asked for, like where is the increase?
Sure.
What's the breakdown of that? I know there were a few slides.
Right. So, basically, there's no big, big-ticket item. Certainly, the salaries, you know, will increase due to negotiations, and we are asking for an additional $25,000 for the, for the leeway to bring in a substitute when we need it. And that would only be as an as-needed basis, and it was a very, you know, it, it was a very conservative estimate. You know, I, I don't really expect to meet that cap, but, you know, that, that's really the, the biggest increase. Some of the other increases is that we are hoping to recoup some of the cuts we, we took last year. We took a lot of cuts in materials costs, in our office supplies. We moved our computer supplies into our office supply line, and, you know, that includes toner, which is so ridiculously expensive. And so, we, we're, we're really tight in that area this year, reusing everything we can and picking up any free pens and Post-it notes we come across in town. Then, you know, there are increases in utilities, of course, you know, as, as there are in any building, as we can witness tonight, because it's very cold in here. And then, the other substantial increase is in the line that's listed as digital subscriptions, which is sort of a misnomer. We were trying to figure out what to call it. It really is essential operational software. So, it's the databases that provide the authority and consistency for cataloging records. It's the, it's our integrated library system, which provides our circulation and our catalog and, and all the necessary work that we need to do. So, that, those are really the, the more, the substantial increases. Everything else has been held firm, and in fact, we reduced the amount of children's books, because the, the trustees are prepared to, you know, backfill some of that from the endowment funds.
Thank you. And that's the substitute, the $25,000 for library substitute, is that, it's not overtime?
No.
And have you, have you relied on overtime or looked at, compared to the costs?
I run a really tight ship on comp time, as my staff will tell you. So, what be, okay, let me see if I can explain. So, because so many of our staff are part-time, so if a staff member can't come in, but another staff member could come in, not all of our staff has paid time off available to them, so if a staff member without paid time off takes, needs to stay home because they're sick or wants to take a couple days off, we can fill in with those hours with another, with a staff member that's already and still part-time. So, it's not overtime. There, there's never any overtime charge. Sometimes, people will look through comp time, but I really urge them to use their comp time and not have that paid out, because I've explained that it has budget implications. And then, we do have one on-call staff member who is a former employee, so she's been trained, she knows how to do everything, and, and so we can call her in on an as-needed basis when, when we really need it.
Thank you.
Sure.
No, thank you for explaining everything so clearly, and thank you for everything you do. I've got really, you know, there's some conversations I'm sure we'll have. I mean, at first blush, the $25,000 seems like a reasonable request, but I guess we're going to have to have that conversation a little deeper, but thank you for coming out.
Oscar?
Oh, no questions. I think that was all very clear and helpful, and thank you again, sir.
A minute?
Yeah, no questions at this time, and thank you so much.
So, start. Thank you. And it was all very illuminating and helpful. I just, just want to elaborate on, on what I'm understanding in terms of the library needs, as a policy measure, the library needs a certain amount of staff members to be open. And that's a change, from what I understand. And I wondered, is that a factor in this substitute hour calculation?
It, it's not, it's not really... It, it's not, it's not really, it's not really a change, it's based on, we need three people in the building. We need two people downstairs and one person upstairs. And so, because that's what we've got staffed for the evenings, we, if one of those people gets sick, so one of the evening staff yesterday was ill and, which meant that I filled in, you know, because we have to have two people downstairs. It's just a safety issue. And the, the policy that we established with the board a couple of years ago is that there should always be a supervisor on deck. Because we've had some issues that it wouldn't be fair to have a part-time person try to navigate. And so, to have that, it doesn't, the supervisor doesn't have to be in any particular department, but there should be a supervisor on staff at all time, or in the building at all times, except we do make an exception for a half an hour lunch on Saturday if somebody wants to step out of the building, they can leave the premises.
So, is that supervisor one of the three or in addition to the three?
It's one of the three.
One of the three?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Let's ask if the public has questions. Mr. Fay.
His hand down. Ken, if you want to speak, could you put your hand up again?
He's gone?
I think he's went. He might be having connection issues. Ken, if you're interested in speaking, could you put your hand up again?
In the meantime, I'll tell you something interesting.
Please.
Because, you know, information is my business. So, a couple of years ago, well, actually during COVID, we removed all the public computers from the teen room and the children's room. And we have seen a massive increase in book circulation. And the tenor of those rooms has changed completely. Because, you know, it used to be kids came in, they made a bee line for the machines. And now, the kids come in, they work with their parents, they pick out their own book, they, you know, they select books as a family and then they take them home and read them. And that's a pretty amazing thing.
Well, thank you. That is very interesting.
Would that work downstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, we still have, and they can use the ones downstairs and they do. Yeah, they come down and use the ones downstairs.
Good. Is Mr. Fay available? No? John, did you want to say something?
Well, just if you have any guidance tonight, that would be helpful. Or anything you want us to rethink or do differently in this budget.
I, I remember in our previous budget discussions, you know, the, the desire to have the department heads come was of paramount importance. And here you are.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate the opportunity.
Is there anyone in the room here who has a comment for Star or about the budget? No? All right, well, let me thank you once again. Mr. Fay is not available.
Well, since he's not available, what would be the impact of, say, the number 25,000? You know, if we're looking at how we could economize and where we could trim, I mean, what would be the impact of, say, like a $10,000 budget for increase for this?
We'll be grateful for that. We, we really just need, we need to know the stress that it places on, on staff, especially if it's a, you know, a short notice kind of a situation where, you know, oh, my gosh, are we going to have to close the library? Or, you know, where are we going to find somebody to pull in? And, and then I'm constantly doing math in my head. Okay, like, okay, I know somebody didn't work their full shift, so I've got two extra hours there, maybe we could pull two hours over here. So, it's just that kind of machinations. But, we would be really grateful for any kind of support, you know, there, that we could get there.
Thanks. And in terms of recommendation, I mean, I think it's still, again, looking at staffing across departments where, and I understand we're also in the middle of negotiations, so there are some things that are yet to be determined. But I would like to see where we can economize on that particular, on staffing across the board. Thanks.
I think that's called known unknowns.
Known unknowns.
All right. Star, thank you very much. Thank you for, I hope you get home safely. Got quite a trip.
It is. Thanks.
All right, next, health provider change.
Yeah, so Sally Cruz-Nix, our HR.
Thank you, Star.
Manager is going to bring this item to you. It is our recommendation to be switching healthcare providers and Sally will explain why.
Thanks, John. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, it's that time of year, plus open enrollment started today. So, this year, we are looking to make a change. We're moving from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont due to the projected increases. And we're, our fantastic team from the Richards Group, which I really want to put a shout out to thank, Jackie, Emily and Jennifer, what they've been able to pull together for us over these past few weeks to get this in motion so that we're all covered by insurance for January 1st. In looking over the Blue Cross renewal, John Potter had asked that they look into different healthcare plans. They came back after looking at a couple of different options for us. They brought back Cigna. So, we'd be looking to move from Blue Cross Blue Shield and move over to the Cigna Health, Health Insurance. And so, again, it would be, it's the same type of plan, so high deductible health insurance plan. The way Jackie described it, it's just two, it's apples of different species that we'll be bringing on that would be effective for January 1st. And we're starting open enrollment period now, today, and that way, everybody's covered by the 1st of January. And again, so this, with you going, by moving over to Cigna, it will create a 2.1% cost increase of, for the calendar year 2026, which was significantly less than the 17.2%, which it was a typo in my memo, I apologize, for the cost increase proposed by Blue Cross Blue Shield. And in your backup materials with the memo, I did include the current cost for Blue Cross Blue Shield for calendar year 25, because our health insurance is calendar year versus the budget, which is a fiscal year. And then, the projected cost for Blue Cross Blue Shield 26, which was what we brought forward. We also have to bring these proposals to our union members and go through negotiation with our unions. And, and what we brought forward to you is the 2026 with Cigna, which is a 95 split between employer, pays 95% and the employees pay 5% towards the premium for the insurance. And I'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Amanda, do you have any questions?
Oh, I just think this is pretty simple. I appreciate the cost savings that you found with the new plan and I'm ready to.
Great. To move to.
Just one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, yeah, I agree. I mean, the numbers, there's no contest. And it's sort of saved the budget to have this option, I would say. So, that's good. And thank you for all your work on it. My question is for fiscal year 26, the one we're currently in. We will see the prices change on January 1st for half of the remaining current fiscal year. Does that, will that come in ahead or behind budget for the current fiscal year?
I need to, so when we budget, when we budgeted for calendar year 26, that was done in the previous budget, correct, John?
Yep.
Right, so the current budget that we're in.
It's half, yeah.
Yeah, right. So, I guess.
So, there's savings from that?
Well, I don't know. That's what I'm asking. Did we budget more than this 2.1% for the second half of the current fiscal year and we're going to see a savings? Or are we, yeah, that's.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember what we did last spring on healthcare.
And I'm happy to leave that as a, like, next question.
Question, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Do the other few gentlemen have questions?
I mean, I'm, I'm good. It's, you know, it's, we've vetted this out. It's, I think, just tremendous fine. Caps off to everybody who's worked on this thing from, from our town staff to the, to the Richards Group.
Isaac?
Yeah, just, it looks, if I'm, am I correct that this is a 430, about $434,000 less than what we'd be spending with Blue Cross Blue Shield? I mean, that's what I'm seeing, 4,095,000 versus 61,000, 62,000. And that's a hu, that's almost half a million dollars that you're saving us by going with Cigna. Is that, that?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Great job for the Richards Group.
I think we also owe some thanks to the, the staff and the unions. They, we consulted with them on this and, you know, this is a disruption to everybody to have to change their plan, but, you know, I'm, I'm glad that the staff is supportive of it, so.
And I appreciate the kind of, you know, out of, out of the box thinking that went into this and all the hard work. So, thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
So, I'm sure we have a motion. Will someone want to make a motion and then we'll open it up to the public?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve the town's medical plan program provider with Cigna for calendar year 2026.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to discuss this matter? Great. Are we ready for a vote?
We are.
All right. All Select Board members in, the motion has been made to approve the town's medical plan program provider with Cigna for the calendar year 2026. All Select Board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And there we are, 5-0. Thank you very much. And what's next? Next is the ballot question on Representative Town Meeting. And I understand we have our, oh, there he is. Mr. Fisher?
Made it.
Yes, he did. And, and Hannah Clarice, thank you.
She made it.
Both very much. John, do you want to say?
Yeah, so the board last discussed this topic in September. And you talked about the possibility of putting a question on the ballot in March. And so, staff went and planned for that possibility, that you might want to ask the voters to consider discontinuing Representative Town Meeting. If you were to do that and if the voters approved that discontinuance of Representative Town Meeting on the March 3rd ballot, then the discontinuance would take effect immediately and the Representative Town Meeting that's currently planned for March would be replaced with an open town meeting in April. The town clerk has secured meeting dates and locations to do either of those options where you to choose to put this before the voters. So, if, if you did so and the voters chose a Representative Town Meeting, there would be district meetings and caucuses on March 11th, that's not right. There, there would be, oh, yeah, the district meetings and caucuses and the informational session would be on March 11th. The Representative Town Meeting would be on March 21st and the Select Board organizational meeting would be on March 23rd. If the voters instead chose an open town meeting, the Select Board would have to rewarn that meeting and the earliest that we could do that would be April 11th. So, the open town meeting would be April 11th with an informational session on April 8th earlier that week. And the Select Board organizational meeting would be on April 13th. There's further information in your backup materials from the town attorney explaining the differences between a Select Board article on the ballot about Representative Town Meeting versus the two charter petitions which you have discussed at length in September. And so, as was mentioned, the town attorneys are here to answer any questions, but they also had a recommendation. And I guess at this, I turn it over to Bob.
Thank you. The, the recommendation that Hannah and I have is that the board warn this on its own motion to be on the warning for the March vote of all of the voters, the first Tuesday in March. And the reason that we say that is that that allows the voters of the town with, to decide the question of whether to have Representative Town Meeting or to discontinue it and not have that have to be held up at the legislative level. So, the way it works under the statute is a vote that establishes representative form of government. That remains in effect until there is a vote to discontinue that. And so, while there are the petitioned charter amendments for the, for that, the charter amendments then go to the legislature for approval. And that, as is pointed out in the memorandum, take a long time, sometimes years to get there. So, if the Select Board warns this on its own motion, then you have an immediate decision on whether to have, to keep Representative Town Meeting or to not keep it. And, and as John set forth, if the vote is to go to open town meeting, we have contingency plans in place with the town clerk for an open town meeting in April. So, if there are any questions, we're happy to answer those. Hannah put together a nice chart, which is in part of your backup materials with regard to how the vote on Representative Town Meeting would go. And essentially, if it's placed on the ballot by the Select Board and if the vote is to, not to discontinue Representative Town Meeting, then Representative Town Meeting stays in place. We'd have our regular Representative Town Meeting. The petitions are moot. If the answer is yes, though, then RTM would be discontinued immediately. You'd go to an open town meeting and then you can vote, you, you would still vote on the petition charter changes. And depending on the outcome there, those would still go to the legislature, depending on whether those passed or not. So, I don't know if Hannah wants to add anything, but it's our recommendation that you do this because it will essentially be the will of the people immediately without having to have things held up at the legislative level.
Thank you, Bob. Hannah, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Okay, board, shall we have a discussion? Shall we have a motion first? Oscar?
What would you prefer first? I have a couple of questions.
I think we should have a motion and then we should have a discussion.
Okay.
Do you want to read the motion?
Sure.
That's right.
I can do it as well.
Go on. Thank you. I move to direct staff to prepare an article for the March 3rd, 2026 Annual Town Meeting Warning to see if the voters of the town of Brattleboro would discontinue the Representative Town Meeting.
Great. So, you have some comments you want to address?
Yes. Question for Bob and Hannah. You say, so, in the version where we put something on the ballot and the vote for, to discontinue RTM is no, so we keep RTM. You say that the petitions become moot and conceptually, they definitely become moot. It's your position that the petitions are officially legally done with, would not get sent to the legislature because the RTM article is voted no?
Yes. There's a statute that clearly establishes that any town that uses a representative form of town meeting has to continue using that form until it votes to discontinue it.
Okay. So, even though the charter petitions would have followed their process and let's say, got a yes vote on one of them, it just wouldn't, that would just short circuit?
Yes. I mean, that, that's, they're sort of contingent on that question, which is why the, one of the, the petitions has that as the first question, but it's. the, the petitions has that as the first question, but it's, you know, we're sort of in uncharted waters because we're the only town that's ever done this. And now it would be the only town ever voting to not do it, but it would be our position that because the statute is clear that you need to have a townwide vote to discontinue the use of a representative form of government, that we would need to do that before any charter amendment could be made to do something else.
You both are on board with the idea that if we put something on the ballot that more or less, that says town meeting, RTM, yes or no, that we'd be okay to sort of administratively take off the first parts of those petitions that also ask about RTM, yes or no? That we would be in the clear to do that?
Yes, that would be a technical correction, and only one of the petitions has that as the first question. The second petition that came in just has it framed as if, if the vote is to discontinue, shall we go with this form?
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question. What was that?
I agree with what Hannah said.
I have a question or two for us to discuss, but maybe let other people ask attorney questions? Okay. Well, so my only hesitations about doing this are that it creates sort of weirdness about not knowing what we're going to have, finding out on election day what kind of town meeting we're going to have, and more than that, that we're going to have people running for town meeting, like campaigning for town, RTM slots for something that very well could go away. So, those are the places where I'm not as sure about doing this.
Well, let me ease your mind.
Please.
By saying if you ran for RTM and RTM went away, you're still going to town meeting.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's.
Can I just, can I just make a comment on that? Sorry to interrupt you.
Yes.
You're going to have that uncertainty either way. The reason we're proposing that you do it this way is because the, the result is immediate. Whereas if you wait for the legislature, especially in the situation where both of the charter petitions were to pass, they could just sit on it for years, especially because this is going up in the second half of a two-year session. I, I went through and actually reviewed every charter petition that's gone up there this year and last year, and even in two thousand twenty-two, and ones that are sort of quote-unquote controversial or more complicated tend to languish, and it, you're going to have that uncertainty no matter what, but this solution that we're proposing allows you to mitigate that as much as possible.
Thank you for that. So, other comments? Amanda?
No, no comments at this time.
I really appreciate the thinking that you put into this, and I don't see why we wouldn't follow this recommendation.
So, has the select board all weighed in, and we can hear from the public now?
I can, I can weigh in more.
Go ahead.
If you want me to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I think it's, I think RTM was a, was a really unique concept. Obviously, Brattleboro was the only town who ever did it, again, proving how unique we are, but I think it's run its course. So, I'm excited to see if our constituents agree with us, because I think that they do, and this has been the overarching thing that I've been hearing. So, I would be in favor of, of this motion.
Yeah. Well, I'm in favor of more democracy rather than less, and I think bringing it to the voters and having an immediate response is definitely the way to go. Do people in the public wish to speak to this issue? We have our, our town moderator right here, our RTM town moderator, who could get voted out of a job.
I could still be open, open town meeting moderator.
You certainly could, yes.
I'm David Gardenstein. I want to support the article that's been proposed by Mr. Fisher. I'd also like to recommend for your consideration as you're drafting the article, that you consider language that would give the alternative if representative town meeting were to be rescinded and resume or revert or some other verb to open town meeting, so that the choice is clear on that ballot article if it's considered to be legally appropriate. Because I think that having both alternatives, what we're leaving behind and what would we be going to, would help to clarify that ballot issue for the voters. I would also note that in considering the two petitions that were submitted, there's been a lot of chatter that they're inconsistent, but I'm not sure that that's necessarily true, because one could satisfy the concerns that led to the Australian ballot petition by having Australian ballot as a check on the budget following town meeting, whether it's an open town meeting or a representative town meeting. And one could add a structure in the charter that following town meeting, however many weeks are necessary to get the ballots printed and to get the notices issued, that there's going to be an Australian ballot on the budget. And that would, I think, satisfy many of the people who requested Australian ballot based upon the fact that there's much broader participation in that process. So, you might want to consider that, depending on what happens with a vote, if it happens on representative versus open town meeting, Charter Commission might take it back up and propose that as part of the process. But I'd like you also to consider that and to recognize that those two articles, those two petitions are not necessarily inconsistent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
To Mr. Gardenstein?
No, no, about the.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so if we approve this motion, what's the process going forward? We'll see language when we see a draft warning?
Yep, in the end of January.
And I also think, also continuing Mr. Gardenstein's comments, that what we need on the ballot is not only a well-crafted ballot, but also a very neutral interpretive statement as to what all three items mean, and what the effect of each item is.
I would also add that if, if you approve this motion and then warn this item on the ballot, and it passes and RTM is eliminated, then when you do the warning for the open town meeting in April, you could include an, an article regarding this Australian ballot as well.
Certainly, yes.
Kate, did you have a question? Either one.
Kate O'Connor, I'm also on the Charter Revision Commission. I agree with, I sort of agree and sort of disagree with our, our great town moderator. I do think that you should vote for the motion as made. I just want, and I'm, this is a very nuanced thing that I'm about to say, but I've sat through dozens upon dozens upon dozens of Charter Revision Commission meetings. When you vote to rescind RTM, it doesn't mean the person is choosing open town meeting. We default to open town meeting because that's what state statute says. So, I think that we can't have any language that says, because you're rescinding RTM, if you want to rescind RTM, it doesn't mean that person is choosing open town meeting. It's what it defaults to. The choice comes when they, when they vote on those two charter amendments for open town meeting and Australian ballot. That's when the choice is. So, I want to, I think that has to be really clear, and it's really hard to wrap your head around this. We've spent years wrapping our head around it, so my head is sort of wrapped around it. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. What you're, what you're just voting on is to say we're rescinding representative town meeting. People aren't choosing open town meeting by rescinding representative town meeting. They get it by default. I also just want to remind everybody that the Charter Commission is still out there, and we will come back to you after the March election sometime to ask for our charter to be placed on the ballot. And our charter, what we come forward with, will be informed by what we hear from in March with those two other things. So, I would just urge you not to rush ahead and put something else on in March when there's all this other stuff brewing. It's a very complicated thing, and it can make your head explode, so I think we've got to try to keep it as easy as possible.
I, I appreciate that your head has not exploded, and I appreciate the nuances in your comment, and I'm sure that our attorneys are aware of it. Hannah, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I don't know how.
But I did. I, just to build off of what Kate's saying, if you rescind RTM, it basically just nullifies those provisions in the charter, but there are some things in the charter that are already voted on by Australian ballot, like the election of the town clerk and things like that, or not, I'm sorry, not the town clerk, I'm getting confused with all the other charter things that I looked at, but there are certain things that under the default under statute would be open town meeting, but because those are already by ballot in our charter, that wouldn't change.
A good example of that also would be bond vote. Be something that by statute is by Australian ballot. If you go away from RT, RTM, Kate is right that you default to open town meeting, but there are certain things that by law have to be by Australian ballot.
Well, great. Are, is there anyone else who wants to speak that's online? All right. We've got two gentlemen we haven't heard from.
All right.
Are, are we ready to vote? Are we ready to discuss?
Ready to vote.
Let's vote. All right. I'll read the motion that somebody made. Oscar?
Yes.
A motion has been made to direct staff to prepare an article for the March third, two thousand twenty-six annual town meeting warning to see if the voters of the town of Brattleboro would discontinue representative town meeting. All select board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
And there we have it, five zero. Hannah, Bob, thank you very much. Thank you for your clear memo and discussion. Let's see.
Yeah.
Sure. Let's take a five-minute break. What the hell? Let's come back to order. We've got two more items. The first is the interim bylaw social assistance. John, you want to introduce this topic?
Uh, yeah, actually Sue Fillion is online and she will step us through this item.
Hi Sue, nice lighting.
I know, sorry, it's so weirdly dark. There is a light on in here, it just doesn't really show. All right. Um, so thanks for entertaining me on Zoom tonight. The weather wasn't that great to make the ride for me. But um, I am here to present information on how our current land use permitting process works for social assistance and charitable service uses. And to provide you information on how the select board could change the way it is currently being permitted if they felt that that was necessary and to be done in a quicker way than, than land use regulations are typically adopted. Um, so this has come up as we've heard, we've, we received a lot of questions about um, how the establishment that was at 69A received permits. And um, so the thought here is to just provide you some information about the uses. Um, and then see if you want to explore, explore this any further. So, under our current land use and development regulations, we have a use called social assistance and charitable services. And that's defined as an establishment that provides social assistance services directly to individuals and it excludes residential and accommodation services. And so this is a use that's permitted in several of our zoning districts. Um, I can share a map if that would be useful for you. Um, but, but the map, the areas of town that we allow it are in our urban center, village center, service center, neighborhood center, mixed use and our institutional zoning districts. So basically that's the um, kind of Putney Road area south of the roundabout. It's the downtown. Um, the mixed use area or neighborhood centers is kind of along Canal Street. Um, some of our mixed use centers are along Canal Street, Burr Street as well. Um, and our institutional zoning districts are campuses like Winston Proudie, um, the Brattleboro Retreat, um, and then the schools. Like so BUHS, BUHS is an institutional zoning district. Well, um, so permitted uses are uses that are allowed by right. So if somebody comes into the planning department and the list is a permitted use in that zoning district, then you know, generally, sometimes we need site plan review, but generally if it's just, you know, if it's in the downtown or something, we just issue a new zoning permit for that use because that, certain uses don't require site plan review. Especially, especially if it's in an existing building and you're just using it, you're not changing any aspects about the site. Um, and so, you know, we, we warn that, um, we post the permit after it's been issued or the property owner posts the permit. But it's a pretty um, transactional kind of uh, transaction. Um, so the other option is to have a use as a conditional use. And so that's one that's required to go through a review, public review process with the development review board. It's a use that's not automatically allowed because it could have potential impacts. Um, and so conditional use review criteria focuses on whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the planned character of the area, um, whether it will not harm um, public health and safety, it's consistent with local and state regulations and plans. Um, it can look at traffic, it can look at landscaping, um, and kind of the character of the area it's going in. And um, one of the other things that can look at is whether it's going to have a cumulative impact within an area of town, um, that could impede development of the area. So if the select board was interested in, in changing a use of the, this particular use of um, the social, social assistance or charitable services from a permitted to a conditional use, um, one way that you could do that is to adopt it through an interim zoning bylaw. Um, and that is basically saying, you know, we have this kind of emergent need and while the planning commission and others are working on the town plan, um, or maybe doing some additional study, you could hold a public hearing with a 15 day warning and then, you know, have a public hearing on it and decide whether or not you wanted to change this particular use from a permitted use to a conditional use. There's pros and cons of having permitted or conditional uses. Or I'll talk about the pros and cons for a conditional use. So um, pros of the, of that could be um, making sure it fits the character of the area. Um, it could possibly mitigate negative effects. Um, it provides a case by case review of proposals. Um, and it's more public because there'd be a public hearing where people could participate at a development review board hearing. Um, cons of it is that it's going to be more expensive and it's going to take longer for a use to receive a permit. Um, it also opens up discretion into the permitting um, process. There is a potential for appeals, um, which can again delay uses from getting going. And um, you know, restrictive conditions could be, could be put on a permit and that could also make it subject to an appeal. Um, so that, that's kind of my presentation. I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you might have or kind of talk about this further.
Sue, thank you very much. This is very thorough. Um, I'll open up the question to my colleagues. I just want to say that as a planner for over 40 years, um, I believe in conditional uses. I think they serve a very valuable purpose in the community. Who wants to go first?
Should we make a motion first?
Um, I, I, Sue, was, was there a motion?
There was an optional motion on page 90.
Okay.
What's the, uh, the date that we would insert?
Sue, is the earliest date they could do December 22nd, 2025?
Yeah, if you.
Was something that you wanted to propose at a public hearing? Um, the way I calculated it with a 15 day warning and getting it in the newspaper, December, Monday, December 22nd would be the first weekday that you could hold a public hearing.
All right. So I'll motion, I'll move to convene a public hearing. At 2:20 to take public comments on an interim zoning bylaw that would make the social assistance or charitable service a conditional use for the purposes of protecting public safety, health and general welfare and to provide for orderly, physical and economic growth.
Great. Peter, do you want to speak to that motion?
Uh, you know, again, I think, you know, warning a, a, a public hearing puts this into a realm of people actually showing up to give testimony, right?
Mm-hmm.
To or not.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, you know, so i- in that, in that democratic process, you know, I'm in favor of hearing from what, what people want and don't want. You know, I mean, I'll, I'll acknowledge that sometimes these things serve a purpose until a void. Do they always do it correctly? You know, maybe, maybe not, right? So I think to, um, opening this up to a public hearing is, is a really good way to go. And if, if they come out in favor of it, then that's fine. If they don't, that's also fine.
Right. But it's a public hearing and, and then, and then we vote?
Right.
Okay. Oscar, did you have your hand up?
I didn't, I have a couple of questions.
Go around ahead as well.
Okay. Um, just a couple of questions for Sue first. Um, is there, is a, what's social assistance and charitable service being a permitted use in these types of districts, is that standard? Is that common? Is Brattleboro unusual to have that be permitted use?
I haven't done a real, um, you know, I haven't looked everywhere around the state. Um, it, uh, you know, I was looking at Burlington and um, there are certainly certain districts where, um, and, and everybody has different kind of uses, but they, they were not as permissive as we are. Um, I can tell you by looking at Burlington, I would need to look at more and I'd be happy to do that before a public hearing or.
I think, and useful information for us to have for any public hearing that we would.
My second question was, what would, and what effect would this have on permits that have already been issued? So if we made a change?
So for permits that have already been issued, there'd be no effect.
Do the permits expire or anything like that? Is there?
Nope. Permits run with, with the use. So no, a permit does not expire. Um, and yeah, so, so no, so, um, you know, there's probably, you know, there is a whole host of social services and in, in the downtown area and, and other parts of town and those permits would not expire.
Amanda?
Yeah, I wonder, is there a precedent in Brattleboro or another community of the idea of an interim zoning amendment?
Yeah, so, yeah, we've, we've done several interim zoning amendments. Um, so one that we did was during, um, during the COVID pandemic. Um, we did an interim with the housing crisis. We did an interim zoning amendment to get rid of density standards in areas with water and sewer. Um, and then we made that more permanent within two years because interim zoning is good for two years. It can be, I think, re-upped one other time. Um, we, the select board recently did it in March, I think it was, or, or maybe May, uh, to come into compliance with state law to upzone areas, um, that have water and sewer. So it has been done.
Cool.
Is that it, Amanda?
Well, one more question. Does this only apply to like a bricks and mortar? Uh, bricks and mortar use, for example?
Yes.
So it doesn't appeal to like a pop-up kind of thing?
Um.
Or pop-up in a particular physical location?
I guess, I'm just, I'm just curious if this only applies to a building in these areas being used for social and charitable.
You're expecting us to have pop-ups?
I'm just wondering if this, if this also applies to, it's just a question. Oh, I don't, we're not doing public, I don't think.
An example of a pop-up might be food, not bombs, of which there are multiple distributions in town, which I think would be a social assistance or charitable thing. But it doesn't take place within a specific building.
John, do you want to address?
Can I? That was well.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Um, I would say, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cover pop-ups. I mean, I think typically those would be, you know, if they were on town property, they'd be permitted another way. But um, no, this would only be for brick and mortar.
Got it, thank you. Isaac, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I actually have a number of questions, um, just as part of doing due diligence, um, for clarifying some, some questions. So the, the first thing, and this may be a question for the town attorney, is, um, it's my understanding that Vermont State statute authorizes interim bylaws only as an emergency measure. And the town, um, the, the memo explicitly states that the motivation is multiple complaints and perceived negative effects. Um, in, is it the opinion of the town attorney that residents' complaints constitute a legal emergency, a legal public emergency? That, that's my first question.
Thank you. We, we have had, uh, we have had interim zoning in the past where we have found emergent situations, uh, for less. Uh, that's ultimately a decision for the board to make as to whether or not, uh, these types of issues that, and some of this might be precipitated by the issues around 69A. But if those are issues that the board deems to be emergent, uh, then yes, that would fit the interim zoning. Interim zoning does require, if it's to be adopted by the select board, to be of an emergent nature.
I have a number of questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And I'll just, that's, I think, something we may want to come back to, is something that was raised at RTM, I remember is this, when we were talking about the budget, is the discussion of what actually constitutes an emergency and what is the definition of that? Um, and there was interest in, in having inform, um, discussion about that. But um, I'd like to clarify the, a little bit about the basis for the proposal and if, ask if, if staff could specify which social assistance establishments were the subject of the complaints referenced in the memo, the number of complaints received and over what period of time, and if the content of those complaints could be made available for the board to review.
So, uh, it was 69A and complaints had to do, um, I, I don't, I'd have to look and see if I had any questions in writing. Um, it was conversant questions about how it was permitted. It was, um, concerns about, um, use of the sidewalk. Um, and then there were some concerns about, um, you know, the, uh, you know, it impacted, impacting other businesses on the street.
Yeah, I can, uh.
And, and were there also police complaints?
Yeah, um, we've had a number of complaints about that, uh, that site. Uh, I can think of five or 10 people who at least asked me, you know, is this, is this an art space and how, was it permitted for that or was it permitted for something else? So many questions like that have come up, I think, just due to the nature of how that all went down. And, and yeah, I think we could probably bring something on that, uh, to the public hearing if you decide to go forward with this.
Um, I also, if I can interrupt your questioning to, to comment, Isaac. Um, we have had other social service agencies come before us and we question their ability uh, to be better neighbors. And I think that that, this, this item comes to the heart of that. I mean, we are left to, to request, uh, that they be better neighbors, to, to, to make sure that their, their clients are not leaving needles in the periphery of their land use. And a host of other, you know, it's not just 69A. It's, and so while it would be great to have this conditional use, uh, so many uses our grandfathered, we're still in the position of asking people to be better neighbors.
Thank you. Um, were the, the, my next question is, were the businesses or social assistance organizations identified in the complaint, so 69A invited to participate or provide comment on this discussion?
Well, they certainly will be if there's a public hearing.
Um, and have social service agencies been consulting about how this interim bylaw might affect their ability or future projects' ability to operate, including potential administrative or financial impacts on dealing with the hearings and, um, staff time that would be required for that sort of thing?
Uh, those are things that you might want to ask people at a public hearing on this if you decide to move forward with this, Isaac.
Okay. Um, and in terms of a project, a staff time cost, what would we, what would be associated with, what, what cost would we associate with this project for preparing the materials for the, the, the hearing on the 22nd that's been proposed, as well as, um, the work for drafting, around drafting this change and also at what we might anticipate in terms of hearings that would be required in the future? Uh, dealing with appeals and all that kind of.
Sue, I don't know if you have an opinion. I think it's pretty de minimis in this case. It's really just doing what you had in the backup materials or is there something more that needs to be drafted?
We'll have to, um, put an ad in the newspaper. Um, and I think that there needs to be, um, a report filed with it as well. So it is pretty de minimis. Um, and in terms of, you know, future hearings, um, you know, that's, uh, lots of people have hearings before the development review board. There is a fee, um, and there is some time involved with it. It would probably take, um, 30, 45 days plus to get a permit. Um, and a $225 fee plus a butter notification. Um, but, but lots of uses in town goes through that process as well.
Say that it would be more, less, or the same as any other time that we, um, want to warn something like this for a public hearing? Any other time that we've asked, uh, staff to do this, would it, the cost be roughly the same or is this more?
No, no, it would be about the same.
Isaac, do you have any more comments?
Thank you. Those, that's, those are all the questions I have. My comments are that I think at this time of increased and heightened need in our of dealing with this mega crisis of, um, climate change and housing crisis and addiction, um, I am interested in lowering the barriers to people who want to help our neighbors and making it easier for us to help one another rather than making it harder. Um, I'm a little bit concerned that if, if, sometimes I think that when, I wanted to ask those questions to get at what is the problem that we're trying to solve. It sounds like the concerns about 69 Elliott Street, for one thing, they're in the process of moving. I just looked at their new space, um, so further from the, from Main Street. Um, I'm hoping that that will alleviate some of those concerns. But, but it sounds like they already have a permit, so this isn't going to affect them. It's more about a, a future, the future. Um, and so. a future, the future. And so I'm, I, my concern, one of my concerns is around NIMBYism. So there's social good that's provided by organizations, but not everybody, most, I would guess a lot of communities wouldn't necessarily want it in their, in their backyard. And I think that it gets a little tricky when you start having, opening this process up to the, kind of the desires of people in that particular neighborhood. And I think that, again, we want to be trying to make it easier. I'm in terms of having a public forums on this particular hot-button issue, I'm remembering kind of what, when we went through the process of the ordinance that was attempted, the downtown safety ordinance, you know what I'm, the downtown conduct ordinance?
I'm familiar, yeah, yeah.
And just the process of that, and I, I don't know how much value that whole process added. And I would just, if, if there are particular issues that we need to address, like there is a problem with an establishment, I would love to do with what we did with when Groundworks came, and we asked the questions. And you, I know, Liz, you asked a lot of questions clarifying about the OSHA thing, concerns, and really addressing, Amanda brought a number of concerns, and, you know, it was very informative. I think it was engaging. I think there's accountability in that process. And so I would, I'd really like for us to be able to address things head-on, and if we have a problem with, with certain establishments, then be able to talk about it. That's, and make sure that people are most impacted by the decision, including business owners and the establishment are, are in the room, but I, I don't know, in terms of, of conditioning the provision of social services, I have concerns about that.
So I guess if I were to weigh in on, I can, let me make a statement, and let's assume that everybody sitting here, both people sitting out there, want everybody to have a warm place to put their head down at night, right? I think we, there's not a person that I know that doesn't want that for everybody. I think it, I think it does have to be managed in a way that I did not see at 69A. You know, I can tell you 25 times that people have either texted me pictures of what's going on there, have called me, come in to see me, to complain about it. Okay, so I think that's a lot where this is stemming from. I understand. I understand the fear behind sort of opening this up and convening a, a public hearing around this topic, that we will probably hear a lot of, a lot of lightning rod response, a lot of, you know, people who were genuinely upset, and, and we need to listen to them too, as much as we need to find warm beds for people at night. So I, I think, to steal a phrase that Liz says, just, we just have to create better neighbors. And sometimes that means we have to, we have to govern it a little bit, and we have to take a look at things like this where we're opening it up for discussions. I don't, I think the fact that the 69A was called an art space was misleading, if I'm, if I'm speaking truth to word. We all know that it wasn't an art space, that it was cloaked as an art space. So that's fine. It served a need. I don't know that it did it correctly. I don't know that it did it incorrectly. So with that, I think opening this up in a, in a public hearing and for conversation is something that we both have to endure.
I would like to have a future. I mean, Rattleboro has so many nonprofit land uses, tons. Mike Pichek said it was more than any other town in Vermont. And that's an interesting statistic, but my point is that I think we need this interim zoning bylaw, or certainly a public hearing about an interim zoning bylaw, because some uses require greater scrutiny. And some uses can provide better compatibility, and some uses can be better neighbors. And I think that if we think that through, then mutual coexistence is assured. And that's what we want. We want, you know, a compatible space that works with the other spaces that are next door, across the street. And, you know, we did have a lot of complaints about the, the impact on neighborhood businesses and, and the neighborhood. And I think that we can do a better job of making sure that the uses in our town get along with each other and don't cause controversy. And that, that would be my goal.
Yeah, I just, to give my comment, having asked my questions, I, I understand the angst around 69A, and Peter, I, I don't even really disagree with any of the way you characterized things just now. I think, I'm not sure that they did things, that they did what they were trying to do in the best way possible, and certainly all the challenges we saw are legitimate. I still, I'm hoping that we won't do this, and the reasons are, first that, yes, we can say things are emergent. I, I can't really say with a straight face that we're hitting any sort of everyday concept of an emergency. The organization in question is moving, and is already permitted. I'm also a little uncomfortable with a tool this broad, sorry, Sue, you, were you raising your hands?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify-
Thing, and I, I've kind of been sitting on it as you were all speaking, zoning permits run with the land, not with the organization, so a move to a different location requires a new zoning permit.
But I, I don't know if they're permitted or not at their new space, but until anything changed here, I assume they could walk into the office and get a permitted use permit more or less transactionally, as you said, right?
Yes.
And there's a timeline here. I mean, this isn't a change that we would make tonight. So I, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of a tool this broad, I mean, this is specifically a reaction to 69A, which is one organization which will almost certainly not be affected by these changes. There are dozens of these other organizations in these areas that did not give rise to this kind of idea in the years and years they've been in business. So I, I feel like this is the wrong tool for the job, and it's a tool that's not even gonna hit the nail that people are talking about here. So I would hope that we would not do this and would look for other solutions.
Let me just speak to what you said, that you said that this is, this is, this is focusing on 69A at this juncture. This is not a new conversation. When I served-
Sure.
On the, on the board of, of Groundworks Collaborative, we had, we were charged, committee was charged with finding a new site. We had built out and had the idea for what we all see now, but we investigated six to eight different, different locations, and at each location, the pushback was tremendous. Fair or unfair, I think that people have the right to quiet enjoyment.
I agree.
And I think, and I think that's what we're speaking about here, right? And, and again, using the term better neighbors, is that, with the understanding, like, you don't necessarily can help who moves in next door to you all the time, you know, and like, where I live, I'm, I've hit the, like, the neighbor jackpot, so, right? So, I mean, I've got great neighbors, so I've got no complaints. But if one of themselves, and a nightmare moves in, I've got to deal with that, and I live there. I don't want to put that on anybody. When we're talking about, when we're talking about the DID, I think that we have to, we have to acknowledge that, we have to take care of our, of our economic center so that our economic center can help with situations like this. If we're choking them out, there's, there's no funds that come on the back end. I'm, I'm a, I'm a philanthropic person. I give my time, I give my money, and I do it because I believe in these causes. I do things that, that raise money and food for people who are food insecure, try to find as much things that I can to try to keep people warm in these harsh conditions, and then, and honestly speaking, in some unfair conditions. So to label this as something that is not, that, and I know that this happens to be maybe the catalyst that, that sort of said, let's put this on the agenda, let's see if there is something there. Because the downtown merchants that have talked to me had great concern over that, all right? And, you know, I think that that is, and, and the people that lived in the immediate drop zone of that, that, you know, I would walk past every day to get to the transportation center and have to listen to them.
Ken, I'm just curious, this isn't, this isn't a gotcha, but when you had that experience with Groundworks, I assume it was still a permitted use back then, and has been for a while, but you still got all that pushback from the community, and I assume that affected the decision you made and the site you chose?
No, I mean, we, we, we worked with Sue and the planning department to find out if, if, if we could do it, and if, and then the blowback from the neighborhood would be, and then you would just listen to the noise and, you know, try to make the best decision that you could. There were a few times where we, we walked away from it because the blowback was so much.
But if there were conditions on that approval, then they would be clear, and all parties would know, and, and make everybody adhere to the conditions that have been set. And that establishment of those conditions is what we're talking about, to have better neighbors.
So-
And I'd love to say a couple of things.
Go ahead.
You know, the big themes in our conversation tonight are really accountability and risk management. It is our responsibility as town government to address risk management and anticipate issues rather than chasing the puck, all right? That hockey analogy, I love it, because you will lose a hockey game if you're chasing that puck, if you're just waiting for one fire after the other to go off and you have to put it out. So what we're doing, it's an organized discussion, and, you know, creating an idea that will lead to a public hearing, that will hopefully create a conversation where you'll have community awareness and buy-in into understanding what a particular organization's strategies are. And when people know more, they feel better. And neighbors of 69A, I will say, also reached out to me to express this. Well, we're have, we're business owners now that are next to 69A, and we're figuring it out. However, I worry about any future business opening here. I don't, I don't, I don't think that that would be appealing. And that, when I think of the future, and I think of winning that hockey game, we have to anticipate the pucks. You know, this is our reality. You know, we are a compassionate, generous community, but we have to do it within, within a scope that will help us work together instead of continually fighting.
And, and that's what land use regulation is all about.
And that's what, yeah. I mean, a myriad of, we all have to deal with land use regulation. I do as a farmer, Peter does as a business. I mean, that's, that's just working. Nobody makes it easier for anybody, believe me.
But, but a condition, you know, makes a use more easily understood to be compatible with its neighbors.
Yeah, I think it's smart.
Shall we hear from the public? Go ahead.
Ivan Hennessy, District Eight. This conversation has revealed two very important things. One, there is no emergent situation. An interim zoning change is completely unnecessary. So that's like a little minor thing. The, the major thing is that the concern that is, that this is intended to address, is that too many poor people will be visible downtown. That is, that is exactly what everyone is describing, in the gentlest terms possible, but fundamentally, it's not a problem that there are poor people, it's that they're clustered together enough that people might notice them. You know, it's probably not so egregious that it could lead to some sort of legal action. I'm sure that there's no jeopardy for the town in that, but it's disgusting.
Kate?
My comment is only on process after I've heard what, heard what everybody's saying. If your idea of a public hearing is to give everybody a chance as a community to talk about this, and I think the goal would be to, for you to get enough information so that whatever decision you decide, everybody involved, whether they like it or not, understands why you made that decision, I don't think having a public hearing in two weeks on December 22nd is the time to do that. And I guess I don't understand why, if you really want to hear from the public, why you just don't wait until the beginning of next year. Just think, December 22nd, holding a public hearing, I think you folks would just do yourselves a service by waiting and doing it at a time when people can actually have the, again, December 22nd to hold a public hearing. I don't think it serves the community. That's just a process date.
Thank you.
That's a reasonable point.
I, Seth?
We have Bob Ozer on the line.
Mr. Ozer?
I don't know. I, oh, there I am. So, yes, you can see me and you can hear me. Bob Ozer from Rattleboro. So I guess a couple of points. Trying to get my head around the idea of a conditional use. And so if I'm an organization or an entity, say a restaurant, and I've got a permitted use already as a restaurant, and then somewhere in the process, and, and you get the conditional use applied, you go through this process, and at some point, as a restaurant, I decide, well, you know, maybe on Fridays, I will do free meals. So is that social assistance and charitable? And so I'm now permitted as a restaurant, but I'm not permitted as social assistance. So does that put me in jeopardy at that point? I have other questions, but I could, I could rattle them off. Just leave that one there.
Cole, and let's hear you rattle off questions.
Sure. I like the idea that the chair mentioned about finding a way to be better neighbors. And I'm wondering if there's a way. Can I, can I speak up?
Okay.
I don't know if I can, but we'll, we'll try. Nope, this one doesn't.
Heaters aren't working anyway.
What's that?
Turned off the heater.
So he can hear you.
Oh, was, was that it? Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay. So I, I like the idea that the chair, I'm sorry?
Just, no, you're good.
I missed that one. I like the idea of what the chair said about how to be better neighbors, and I'm wondering if there's a, a way to cobble together some process to reach out to the folks behind the former 69A and figure that out. Peter, Peter, in fact, had a, maybe this is off-topic, but Peter had a Vermontitude the other day on community, community restorative, I think it was, and a way of getting- I think it was, and a way of getting people together to sort of do a shuttle diplomacy and to figure out solutions to problems. And that might be an easier way than doing a declaration of an emergency and a conditional use. Maybe just talking to folks privately, opening a dialogue. And then that whole idea of emergencies, I really have a problem with declaring, maybe this is because I'm reading too much news, but if everything gets declared as an emergency in order to move forward, I think that's disingenuous. We're living with these emergencies on a daily basis. So they're not really emergencies. They're part of our society and we need to deal with it. So I guess the one question that's out there then is, is if you've got a permitted use for a different purpose and you start to do a social assistance program within that permitted use, do you now fall into jeopardy because you don't have the conditional use? Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Seems like that your restaurant question was kind of an interesting hypothetical. Sue, do you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, so the land use permit is based on the principal use of, of the property. So in that situation, no, you know, if one or two days a week, a restaurant started giving away free meals, we would not, you would not need a conditional use for that because the principal use is a restaurant.
Thank you. Shall we hear from Marta? And then we should wrap it up because it's getting very late.
I'd love to hear from, just before Marta, just John or Bob's second comment about the dialogue. My understanding is that John, our town manager, engaged in significant dialogue from the get-go. And I don't know if you wanted to talk about that strategy that was ongoing.
Yes, among many others. There was quite an effort in the community to have that dialogue there, and it was rebuffed to my, in my experience.
So with the DBA, and I understand that they had numerous conversations with interaction.
Yes. Turning point, others.
Marta?
Yeah, so I'm a little confused. I came here tonight when I saw it on the agenda thinking, you know, there had been some formal complaints. Town staff had investigated, substantiated those allegations or whatever. And so it kind of surprises me to bring this all up like on such a, I don't know, permanently altering our zoning use just from what really sound just like complaints or allegations, but nothing like formal in writing about a specific concrete situation that can be investigated and substantiated. I think there are a lot of misconceptions about 69A. I mean, I heard, you know, Peter was talking about lay their head at night. Well, I don't know. Do people understand it's an art space that provides two hot meals a day and it's only open 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday? There's no laying your heads at night there. And also, art is created there and is for sale there. I know a number of people in the community who have bought really nice art pieces, and I have my eye on a couple I'm probably going to buy. And there's a policy of splits with the cost. It's 50/50 with the artist and the, and the community. If they use their materials, it's 100% if they make the art elsewhere and bring it in, a member of the community brings it in for sale. I mean, you know, has anyone actually looked at some of the people who are making repeated complaints, who are also harassing and being just horrible to people who have done nothing wrong in that space, which is what I have observed. I've also sat there for hours at a time, and it is a calm, helpful place where people can get food, hook up with some clothing and some shoes, you know, as needed, sunscreen, all kinds of things. So like, I feel like this has just jumped the question. Like, you haven't even started the process to get concrete complaints that you can substantiate and investigate, and you're just jumping to they're bad neighbors. I have been around there an awful lot. I've never witnessed anything that somebody in that space has done or said that made me think that something terrible was going on there. I've heard allegations of drug use, but if you go in there, there's a big sign that says, if you're caught using drugs, you will be permanently trespassed. I mean, and they do it. So this all just seems kind of like, just jumping the gun to try to go right towards the zoning thing. And, you know, I think when requests of communication come in from someone being, who's making all of those assumptions and maybe begins that being hostile, maybe that communication isn't received. Maybe there needs to be, you know, a kinder, quieter conversation. But, but I agree with Ivan, like, this isn't an emergency. And what I thought was gonna, I was gonna learn about concrete and investigated substantiated complaints, but all we've got is people like word of mouth or texting someone rather than any kind of process to determine if these allegations are even, you know, something that the town should get involved in, take action on, and that kind of thing.
Thank you, Marta. All right. Is there any more discussion? We have a motion on the table. Are we ready to vote?
I have more that I'd like to contribute here. If we had invited 69A, since that's been identified the subject of concern, if we had actually physical copy of complaints, I received one written complaint, one, I think all of us did, one long letter with a whole bunch of concerns. A lot of them were about, the concerns about people who had used, who were homeless, who were downtown, but not necessarily about 69A itself, but about people who were, may have used that, that resource. But anyway, if we had actually invited the advisory board members and the folks who are running 69A to come talk with us and have a discussion and exhausted all of our other options, you know, I, if people had, I had three meetings with folks at 69A over the last three months that I publicized to listening sessions, because I had been, I'd actually been invited to come and have a chance to connect and hear people's concerns. You know, and, and there was members of the public who came to those, but like, there wasn't, that was, that would have been an opportunity as well to, for there to have been some discussion of concerns. I didn't hear a whole lot there. I didn't see business, nearby business owners. If the planning director is telling us that she'd have to look and not sure that she has any written complaint, I mean, to me, this is a, there is an emergency, and that's the, you know, the fact that there were over 100 people were suddenly without shelter this summer. And this is one of the places that actually absorbed people. And I think that when you put more barriers to social services being able to be provided, it could mean that it's harder to actually, you know, fill those urgent needs that our social service agencies, other social services agencies just were not prepared to absorb any of that need that was really just suddenly we had in our community. We're going, I would be open to a conversation, like, if we wanted to talk, you know, say in January, we were to look, or after we finished the budget, we were to look at, okay, look at all these permitted uses, you know, we're talking about duplex, the permitted uses in village centers, or multi-unit dwellings of five or more units, bed and breakfasts, grooming or boarding house. I mean, there are a lot of different things that I think could be, could present some, actually more disruption. I mean, bar drinking, drinking place, we don't have, that isn't conditioned. To have an entertainment spot, I mean, I think that this is, I don't think this is appropriate to single out this one particular thing of social assistance or charitable services. So I would, I would, I'd move that we table this discussion to a time when we can talk more thoroughly about all of the permitted uses of land and zoning.
Say it like a public hearing. I mean, I don't mean to make light of it, but that is what I think we're trying to put on the agenda. So, you know, and I'm also curious if we had Chief Hardy here, and we're all looking for hard, fast evidence, how many times people have been no trespass from 69A. I also want to further be clear in just saying, this seems to be the catalyst for this conversation. And what we are trying to do is not eliminate these services, is we are trying to make sure that within our downtown district, the very thing that can hold these organizations up and, and, and help support them financially when they need finance can't be unfortunately within the area of the DID. And I think that that is what we are trying to put on the agenda to discuss on the 22nd.
Are we ready to vote on this motion to have a further public hearing?
I would like to weigh in Kate's comment about the timing of it. I think that we should do it on December 22nd because I, being a procrastinator myself, I know, just set the date, let's do it, and let's do it.
All right. Are we ready to vote then?
Well, just point of order, I want to make, I'm not sure if you can table something after a motion's been read, but I want to give, I mean, Isaac said it, and I want to make sure it has its moment. I don't know the answer.
It would be asking to the person making the motion to withdraw the motion or change it.
And I think, I think that the vote itself speaks to Isaac's amendment.
Certainly. I mean, I'm probably wrong. I suspect we could have tabled the agenda item, but I don't know.
Oscar, I'm gonna withdraw that motion. Thank you for that explanation. I would just offer a friendly amendment, that it be a, to take, that we change it to move to convene a public hearing on December 22nd, to take public comments on an interim zoning bylaw that would make changes to the conditional use for the purposes of protecting public safety, everything, all these things. But strike the social assistance or charitable service to see if there are other items that people want to move to have being conditional use. For instance, entertainment places, bars and drinking places.
I do not agree with that. Is there a, would you have to approve a friendly amendment?
Yeah, no, I'm good with the amendment as I read it.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Peter has made a motion. Move to convene a public hearing on December 22nd, 2025, to take public comments on interim zoning bylaw that would make the social assistance or charitable service a conditional use for the purposes of protecting public safety, health, and general welfare, and to provide for orderly, physical, and economic growth. All select board members in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All select board members not in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
All right, three to two. The ayes have it. Now, where are we on our agenda? We have one more thing.
Yep.
John, you want to discuss the monthly FY28 budget update for October?
Yep, the finance department has provided you a monthly finance report through the end of October. And that report has line item details and budget to actual reporting for the general fund and the utilities and parking funds. With a third of the fiscal year completed in the general fund, annualizing the property taxes, we have taken in 36% of budget. And on the expenditure side in the general fund, prorating annual expenditures that have been made at the beginning of the fiscal year, we are now at 31% of the annual budget. So total revenues in the general fund, including receivables, is $22,460,555 through the end of October, and the total expenses are $10,079,132. And that, that has a surplus of $12,381,423. The finance department reported on the receivables, as you've requested in the past, including EMS receivables, which were calculated at 38% of total EMS charges at $338,381. On average, we've been collecting 43% of the EMS charges, but we're still conservatively calculating that at 38%. Some things to note in this report, that utility costs continue to be rise, you know, rising, and that has continued, as well as overtime budgets for fire, police, and dispatch are over budget. This, these have been offset by underspending of staff salary lines. In the utilities fund, again, through 33% of the year, revenues raised are at 33%, and expenditures, when prorated, are at 20% of the annual budget. Total revenues in utilities fund through the end of October is $2,349,115, and total expenses, $1,726,516, for a surplus on the year of $622,599. In the parking fund, revenues are 27% of the annual budget, and when we prorate expenditures, we see that those are at 23% of the annual budget. So there, we are running a surplus of just over $1,000, with $270,473 in total revenue and $269,296 in total expenses. Also included in these reports is a loan report, a grant report, and a transfer report. And I'm happy to try to field any questions.
All right. Oscar, do you have questions?
No, not really. I, John, we talked about a couple minor things I had, but I have no major concerns. We're continuing to monitor it, and I still just, I think it's worth pointing out, I think, how much this report has evolved and I think developed in really helpful ways over the year. So, no.
Amanda?
Thank you. That's helpful as presented.
Great. Peter?
I'm good. No, thank you.
Isaac?
No, thank you.
All right. I have two things I'd like to note. First, on page 98 of the parking fund, there's a surplus of $1,177. A surplus is a surplus, no matter how small it is. Having seen many, many years of that being in the red. Also, would you like to comment on the fact that you say utility costs are rising, which is creating the impression that costs will exceed budget?
Yes, in utility lines, yeah.
Just in utility lines?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, and I thank you for this report. Obviously, raising 36% of the budget and spending 31% of the budget is a good outcome. And then I assume that these revenues are what we got more interest on.
Somewhat. The revenues there are primarily receivables in property taxes, but even, even if you just bring that down to what the, what we've received, we're still looking pretty good in that general fund, so.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. No motion required?
Nope.
Any questions?
Any questions?
My motion to adjourn. I dropped the gun.
We're all just so cold.
I can't feel my feet.
Because we've got a room for five hours.
All in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, unanimous.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Oh, thank you, Seth. Thank you, BCTV. Thank you for all the attendance.